All right, I'm gonna call to order with my Philadelphia Flyers hockey puck gavel. Call to order, the April fourteenth, two thousand twenty meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. Why don't we do attendance to see who's here and then I'll make a statement. So I, Aton Goldberg, am here.
Kelly Corbier is here.
Kate Barnaze is here.
You may need to unmute yourself.
Peter Boynton here.
Aaron Preston is here.
John Simons, we're waiting on you. You unmute if you're muted.
Um, Jean, can you hear me? This is Peter.
Hi, Peter. Yes, I can hear you. We're waiting on John Simons.
So, right, for others that are on the line, normally on these conference calls, all you gotta do is hit the mute button on your iPhone. But in this case, you also have to hit star six in addition to the mute button on your iPhone. If you don't hit star six, no one will be able to hear you.
Do you guys hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I did the star six.
Thank you, Peter.
I'm just looking out for your six.
Yeah, all right. I'm gonna read a statement. Again, this is Aton Goldberg, Chair of the Planning Board. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand twenty order to spending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section eighteen, and the Governor's March fifteenth, two thousand twenty order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the North Andover Board, uh, this meeting of the North Andover Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by watching on your television or by visiting www.northandovercam.org. If you have questions or comments that you wish to submit during the hearing or during any public, uh, during any public hearing or during this meeting, you can email them to Monica and the email address is M G R E G O I R E at northandoverma.gov. The question or comment will be read during the proceedings and responded to accordingly. The way we're gonna work tonight is all votes that we take will be by roll call. For each item that we hit on the agenda, we'll have a staff member, either Monica or Jean, introduce the item. We will then have the applicant or proponent say what they wanna say, do whatever presentation they wanna do. I remind everyone to introduce yourself when you start talking. If you are referring to any drawings, pictures, or any information that's in the packet, please identify it by a specific page. After the applicant has spoken, we will take questions and comments from the board. We will go in the order in which we normally sit, so it'll be John, then Aaron. We'll go to Peter, Kate, Kelly, myself. I'll go last if there are any further questions, okay? That's kinda what we'll, the way we'll go about it, okay? Anyone have any questions or comments now? Okay, first item, Ree Street LRC Builders LLC requests for endorsement of lot release Form J.
Hi, good evening. This is Monica. Can you hear me?
Yes, Monica, we can hear you.
Yeah.
Fantastic. Um, again, this Ree Street development is a seven-lot development that was approved towards the end of twenty eighteen. They're looking for endorsement of a lot J, Lot Release Form, for all seven lots as they have completed most of the roadwork and utilities. The lot is still under construction. If you see in your report, the applicant, and I'm sorry, my internet is very slow right now, so I'll try and go through this thoroughly as I can. So I apologize for the lag. They've submitted, um, and I apologize, technology, my favorite right now. They've submitted documentation that is required under the, the later conditions for prior release. And reviewing the application this afternoon, it, it looks like documentation in, it has been submitted. I do need to check in terms of any type of easement that might be needed. I was under the impression that I had everything, but I'm not. I, I want to go over this one more time with conservation. So what I would recommend is that, under the current situation, that once we receive this last piece of information, if it is sufficient, then the board would grant the staff planner or plan director to endorse the, the lot J.
So are you suggesting we vote to recommend signing of the Form J contingent on the planner and assistant planner getting satisfactory further documentation or waiting on a vote?
Again, this is Monica, and I would say upon receipt of, of proper documentation, then we can sign.
Okay. That's fine. Does anybody have comments? Go ahead, Jean.
Aton, I have comments. So there's, there's two documents, Monica, that we spoke about today that you were not able to locate. Is the applicant here? Can the applicant speak to whether these are recorded documents and we just don't have them on record?
Hi, Dave, ask away. Um, can you, can you tell me what document you, you think you're currently missing? Uh, I had them all sent over to you. I can check my records right now.
Monica, do you wanna speak to that? Monica? All right, David, this is, is a drainage easement required for the subdivision? We do not have the recorded copy of the drainage easement as far as I can see. And there's also some type of CR or open space restriction that the condition prior to lot releases specified as required by, um, sorry, I'm opening up. National Heritage and Endangered Species. So the, the condition sixty lists three things that are required. We have the homeowners agreement. We do not have the recorded drainage easement, and we do not have a declaration of restrictions from the National Heritage and Endangered Species.
So, uh, this, this is John. Normally in these circumstances, the key thing we want is that when we release the lots, we wanna ensure that they post a bond that's satisfactory to meet the needs of completing all the work. And then we can give the lots away because we don't need that security. How good a shape is the paperwork in, uh, for the, you know, setting the bond amount? And is it a, a, a cash bond or what type of bond is it?
Hi, this is Monica. I'm back online. So they will be submitting a, a cash bond payable to the town, but they will be submitting a check in the amount of just over a hundred and seven thousand dollars, which will be payable to the, the town. So the town will hold it.
Okay, and you're satisfied that DPW got everything that needs to be done, um, uh, so that we're not short in terms of money?
This is Monica. DPW visited the site last week and they had a conference call with the applicant and went over all the, the missing information. What they did was they compiled a spreadsheet of any potential work that might be done, and they based that bond amount on, on that. So I am confident that with, that, once they submit the, the bond amount, that we are, we will be taken care of.
Okay, great. That's, I, I think, a key piece of it. I think the other things that Jean mentioned that we don't have, if our decision said we were supposed to get them before lot release, then we shouldn't release the lots until we get those things.
Uh, this is Aton, so I agree with that. My only question is, should we vote to release it contingent on receiving those items? Or should we put it over until we confirm that we've received those?
Well, I, I would ask Monica the question, are they close to doing it? Because if they're close to doing it, then I think we could do it. But if they haven't even thought it, it's gonna take them weeks, make them come back.
Hi, this is Monica. Dave, are you on the line? Do, do you think you might be able to check to see if these, these items are in place? I would be able to check with conservation to see if they would be in receipt of the open space restriction, but, um,
Yeah. I think, I think I have all these in place, but just, I've been struggling, as with everybody else, uh, you know, with the social distancing, getting all sent over to you. So I'm not, I'm not at my office right now. Uh, but, you know, I, I'm sure if I could, you know, you're not in at my office in the morning, I'll be able to send you over exactly what you're looking for.
So, in fact, they shouldn't have gotten this far if we didn't have these documents provided at one time, to be honest. So I would trust that they should be in place. I can't confirm that they are. I haven't seen evidence of it today, but, um, I think Aton's recommendation would be, it would be okay to condition it of signing it once the Form J is submitted with the engineer's stamp conditioned on providing everything required prior to the release of a statutory covenant. And this is Jean. I'm gonna apologize. I didn't say it at the beginning.
All right, this is Aton. Uh, any additional comments?
Uh, I, I'm fine with that if that's, uh, if, if Jean and Monica are okay.
Okay, so John, do you wanna make a motion?
Uh, yes, I would make a motion, direct the planner to, uh, release the lots, uh, subject to all of our requirements being in hand before we, uh, we accept the, uh, lot release.
This is Kate Barnaze. I'll second the motion.
Okay, roll call vote, starting with, with, uh, John.
Uh, John Simons, yes.
Aaron Preston, yes.
Aton Goldberg, yeah.
Kate Barnaze, yes.
Peter, are you here?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so this is Peter, yes.
Okay, uh, motion passes five zero. All right, next on the agenda. Planning Board Report. Uh, Jean or Monica, you wanna walk us through, um, let's do, uh, articles three and four together, then twelve, then fourteen. All right, so let's do three and four, then twelve, and then we'll go from there. Okay, so we're gonna start with Articles Three and Four, Authorization to Accept and Grant Easement. This is one we do every year. I don't really think it needs any discussion. So can we get a motion? John, I'm just gonna ask you to make pretty much every motion, uh, to authorize, uh, to vote favorable action on authorization to accept and grant easement.
Uh, I think there's a motion to that effect, yes.
Kate Barnaze, I'll second it.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, roll call vote, starting with John.
Uh, John Simons, yes.
Aaron Preston, yes.
Aton Goldberg, yeah.
Peter Boynton, yes.
Kate Barnaze, yes.
Okay. Article twelve, Authorized Board of Selectment to Acquire Land, One and Three Story Drive. Jean, do you wanna say anything on this one?
Sure. So in your packet, you have a plan set from the senior center approval. It's titled DZI. When you open that plan set, the C one page, so it's the third page down. We'll give everybody a second to get there. This is the layout and materials plan. On that plan set, you'll see the one Surrey Drive parking lot is the furthest to the left. The senior center building is on the lot to the right. And so, as you recall, a special permit was granted this past fall for the construction of the senior center and associated parking. At the time, the parking lot was owned by Sutton Redevelopment. It's still owned by Sutton Redevelopment. This article purchase, proposes to purchase that lot. Through the planning board process, we received a special permit to park on a satellite lot. At that time, we were unsure as to whether we would proceed with a lease agreement or a purchase agreement. And so, Belt and Suspenders, we permitted to park on a satellite lot. However, um, the determination is made that we wanna move forward with the warrant article to purchase. And a appraisal has been done, so this article proposes to purchase that lot at five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Hi, this is Aaron Preston. Hey, I have, I have a question of, of, about this article. Is there a, um, a purchase agreement in place? I think the one thing that makes me uneasy is the, uh, and/or imminent domain as part of this, um, article.
Yeah, the, all intentions are to move forward with a purchase and sale agreement, as, as far as I'm aware, but.
I, I gotta tell you, I'm shocked by this, absolutely shocked by this, because for three years, we were told that we would, it was a free deal. And there were no other costs associated with it. Now, all of a sudden, at the thirteenth hour, there's a cost associated with this? I, I gotta tell you, we, we got had by somebody along the way on this thing.
Um, John, that, that is not the case. Through the whole permitting process, which started in, I believe, early July and ended in September, all discussions were around, um, a town meeting. We did approve a donation of land for fifty-seven thousand three hundred square feet, which is the, the lot to the left of this. There was a conceptual plan with eighty dedicated parking spaces. However, once we brought the architect on board and really laid out the optimal, optimal building and, and circulation and traffic flow, it, it, it progressed to the idea of purchasing.
We never got, it, when this whole project was approved as a public-private partnership, there was never any, uh, mention that the town would have to cough up a half million bucks for this thing. I, 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 I mean, it, it feels to me that the whole thing was now sold under false premises. I, I don't know, it's just, I, I, I'm actually shocked, speechless almost, that we're actually paying for something. I thought for sure we were getting that as part of the deal. That was part of the whole deal.
Nope, the, the, what was approved at the May eighteen town meeting was the donation of fifty-seven thousand three hundred square feet, which is still the donation amount, and that's where that building sits. However, the layout and configuration, again, to, in order to get eighty dedicated parking spaces, which really separates from the multifamily development, um, this goes back to January of eighteen or so, when, um, the developer purchased that lot, and then we proceeded through site plan review with the understanding that this lot, we permitted it through special permit through the planning board as a satellite lot that, that we would have to either, either have a lease agreement or purchase it.
When the town, when the town did the original thing for the senior center and said it was gonna cost a certain amount of money, the deal was, look at this. We're going to share property. It's gonna be a public-private partnership. This is what it's gonna cost us. This is what we're gonna give the developer. Now, all of a sudden, we have to pay more money for it. I, 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 I mean, Jean, I, this isn't on you. This is, I mean, and this is sort of outside of, um, sort of, you know, our, our normal stuff, so I'm, I'm not sort of leaning at all on you. I just, I, there's no way, I, I mean, just as a matter of principle, I have a real problem with this because of the lack of transparency back when this thing was originally proposed.
Well, I think this was a change, this is Aton, I think this was a change from, this was in addition to what was originally proposed, right? So there, this was that extra house that was added on. I think what was, I think you're right, John, that what was approved at town meeting didn't include this, um, but the project sort of grew. And I think the idea, when we went through the permitting, was that to get the optimal use out of all of this with the way that the driveway was set up and changing that, and the way the traffic was, is that they would, they would either buy or purchase or lease that, I guess, now demolished house next door. I mean, there was no prices talked at that point, but I, I do think we did talk about this after the original proposal had gone through.
I, I, yeah, maybe, I mean, but I don't ever remember there being a question of the town having to pay money, uh, for it. So, you know, again, this is just me sort of being me. It's probably less a planning board issue than me as a private citizen, but it, it just leaves a bad taste in my mouth, and I think it goes back to how the town manager sold the original deal for this thing.
Fair enough. Any other comments? All right, so, um, get a motion to approve, uh, allow to, do you guys wanna vote on this tonight? If people, if people are comfortable voting on this, and I ask for a motion to, um, uh, recommend favorable action on the purchase of this one three story.
This is Peter.
Hi, this is Aaron Preston. Oh, go ahead, Peter. Go ahead.
Is there, uh, thank you, Aaron, is there an urgency that we vote tonight? Because if there isn't, I think we should wait.
There is not. There is not. Most likely, we will have a meeting sometime in May. If not, we can always postpone our vote until, um, town meeting. So there's no urgency, but I, I would like to have a recommendation before the warrant, if we can.
Yeah, and I, I'm just saying that I think if there's no urgency, that perhaps we have some time to just lay out, hey, here's how this happened, and here's how we got there. I think, you know, John's point about maybe how this was originally portrayed, maybe part of the puzzle here. But if there's no urgency, I don't see a reason to vote now.
Okay, so what we can do is we'll hold off voting on this one. Maybe we can get a little bit more of a timeline, just that, you know, the changes in plan, so that we can all be on the same page when we vote on this.
Hi, this is Aaron Preston. I would, I'm not sure what our leeway is to amend the article. I would really like to get rid of the and/or imminent domain of this. If, if the purchaser or the owner is willing to make this sale, that's, that's one thing. But given the, the use, I don't think that the owner should be forced into a sale.
So, we don't have, um, amendment powers at this moment. That would have to be something that's done at town meeting. But again, why don't we hold off on the vote to see if maybe by the time we take a vote in May, maybe there'll be a purchase and sale, you know, potentially, or a draft purchase and sale in place. All right, so let's hold off on voting on that one. Annual Town Meeting Warrant, Article fourteen, reported to the Community Preservation Committee. John, can you tell us about them, about what we're voting on here?
Yeah, um, this year, it was a pretty light year for, uh, projects. The, you know, there's a number of projects that we have that are requiring the Affordable Housing Trust, the Playground Master Plan, uh, are both in that category. Probably the two, uh, significant projects that we are recommending funding on this year. One is the Stevens Memorial Library entrance stairway. I don't know sort of how familiar you are with it, but the, at the front entrance of it, there is sort of the, the beautiful staircase, and there's an enormous amount of water leakage underneath. And it, they, the library committee with the, in conjunction with Steve Foster, has spent a lot of time analyzing what it's gonna take to finish that, fix that problem, stabilize it, and actually, you know, completely mitigate it going forward. So I think they've done their homework, and I think we feel that it's, it's a good project and a reasonable amount. So that's, um, uh, the one big project. The other, uh, significant project is the Schofield Mill. We had funded some work several years ago, but it was only a partial restoration of that. This one, the town manager's been directly involved in. I asked a number of questions about whether this is going to actually make that facility very solid and, um, you know, worthy going forward so that it will last. Uh, I, I think I received satisfactory assurance to that effect. I, you know, the Schofield Mill actually is probably the original mill in North Andover. It actually has extraordinary amount of historical significance. Uh, it's, I think, like, one of the very first builds of that type in the entire Maryback Valley, and, um, so it's, it, it is pretty significant. There's well more than enough money. It's fun to cover it. You know, for next year, we're gonna bring in roughly two point two million plus another, uh, probably four or five hundred thousand statewide reimbursement, plus the money we have in reserve. It's going to be, uh, you know, more than enough to cover. So that's, that's basically it, yeah.
Okay, uh, any, any comments, board members? Okay, um, so, um, Aaron or Peter, funny, can someone make, or Kate, can someone make a motion to recommend favorable action on, uh, the CPC article, Article fourteen?
I'll make the motion to approve, recommend favorable action.
Okay, motion made by, by John.
Kate Barnaze, I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Uh, John Simons, yes.
Aaron Preston, yes.
Aton Goldberg, yeah.
Peter Boynton, yes. Please tell me if you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you, Peter.
All right, thank you. Sorry, I, I tried to get through to make the motion, and I, I wasn't able to, sorry.
Kate Barnaze, yes.
Okay, uh, that's approved. Uh, okay, Article twenty-nine, this is a citizen Uh, okay, uh, Article twenty-nine, this is a citizen petition. I believe we have, is Mr. Connors here?
Yes, I am.
Uh, Mr. Connors, thank you for joining us. Do you want to take a few minutes to just give us a, um, explanation of the citizen petition?
Sure, no, I'd be happy to, thank you for giving me the opportunity to do so. Um, do you need me to read the, um, three-sentence, uh, warrant, or just go ahead and give you an explanation of it?
No, we, we have, we have the warrant, um, but I'll rea-, uh, I'll read it into the record. Uh, to see if the town will vote to impose a three-year moratorium on the construction or installation of any artificial synthetic turf with the surface covering of loose fill made from tires, also known as crumb rubber, on any public land in North Andover. The moratorium will begin on May nineteenth, two thousand twenty, and end on the date of the two thousand twenty-three annual town meeting. This moratorium does not include all artificial turf, only artificial turf with a crumb rubber infill, or take any action relative there to.
Great, yep, thank you for that. So first, I just want to emphasize four important points on what this article is and what this article isn't. Um, one, as the article emphasizes, it is not a moratorium on all synthetic turf. Two, it does not prevent the town from laying down artificial turf on public land in North Andover. Three, it does not require North Andover to replace any existing artificial turf fields that contain chrome rubber. And finally, it is only a moratorium on the construction or installation of synthetic turf with chrome rubber infill. I, you know, and I also want to say, I'm, I'm not a scientist, I'm not an expert on chrome rubber, but as a citizen who's heard troubling concerns from very reputable sources about the safety of chrome rubber, um, especially on young children, I, I want to be, I, I joined a group of concerned citizens around this and volunteered to be, um, you know, this, this, the signatory to it, the lead signatory. So, I, I, I did want to say that I understand there's nothing conclusive about the evidence, um, from all the research I have done, but chrome rubber infill is enough of a concern that, and two bullet points here, organizations like the Toxic Use Reduction Institute out of the University of Lowell, which is my alma mater, has been focusing on this issue, and they urge towns to look for alternatives. The Toxic Use Reduction Institute is a group of scientists that provides resources and tools to help businesses and communities in Massachusetts to find safer alternatives to toxic chemicals. Also, the EPA no longer backs the use of chrome rubber. They, along with the Center for Disease Control and Prevention and the Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry, launched the Federal Research Action Plan to investigate the effects of chrome rubin- on, chrome rubber on human health. The EPA stated that without further study, no conclusions can be drawn about the safety of chrome rubber. Together with the Consumer Protect Product Safety Commission and the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, they're still working on determining the safety of chrome rubber synthetic turf. There are seven facts, uh, that I listed that we do know. Um, I'll go through them quickly, they're, they're brief. One, chrome rubber artificial turf consists of tires ground into tiny pellets that are put into plastic carpet to produce playing fields. Two, chrome rubber contains endocrine disruptors and eleven carcinogenic chemicals, raising concerns about its health effects, especially but not limited to young children. Three, as the fields are used, the chrome rubber breaks down and creates a dust that contains carcinogenic chemicals that are easily inhaled. Four, because chrome rubber pieces are so small, there is nothing keeping them in place. They migrate off the fields and are carried into homes through players' shoes and clothing. Five, synthetic turf fields are often maintained with additional toxins such as chemical disinfectants, flame retardants, and antimicrobials. Other chemical compounds that exist include acetone, arsenic, benzene, chromium, lead, and mercury. Six, a member of the Board of Health warned about staying away from crumb rubber, chrome rubber, because chrome rubber fields get very hot in the summer, imposing danger to heat exposure. As the fields heat up, the chemicals in the fields volatiles, creating a greater exposure risk for players. In warm weather, their toxic chemicals in synthetic turf fields are even more likely to be inhaled by those playing on those fields. And seven, lastly, as more information becomes available about the toxins and other health and environmental concerns related to chrome rubber, more and more communities are turning away from this type of turf. So, this three-year moratorium will allow for the current research on chrome rubber artificial turf to be carried out. From the data gathered, scientists and public health professionals will be better able to determine the risk involved in exposing our children and residents to chrome rubber. With public hearings held by concerned citizens, or a bird of health if they wish, this will allow scientists and experts to be brought in to share their knowledge. From there, we can make an educated assessment as to whether to continue the use of chrome rubber on our public land. So in conclusion, our own Board of Health says that they will be monitoring the studies, but if we lay down chrome rubber turf and then further studies make even stronger, an even stronger link to health concerns, we don't want to be in a position to have to consider tearing up the fields. This is a financial issue as well as a health and safety issue. I would hate to see my tax dollars spent on something that would ultimately just need to be pulled up. And finally, from my perspective and many others, if there were no alternatives to chrome rubber, it might be hard for some people to support this. However, in light of the fact that there are safer alternatives, we owe it to our children in the town to apply caution on behalf of everyone's health and safety. So again, it's just really a moratorium, it's just being prudent and cautious. Um, and I'd really like that time for the town to, uh, gather more information and just be more cautious and, and safe about what we are putting down for our fields. Thank you.
Okay, uh, any, uh, John, any questions or comments?
I, I, I guess my first question is a procedural question. What, like, standing does this have? It's, it's not a zoning article, I don't think, it's not a change in a town, uh, ordinance or anything like that. I mean, it, does it, does it have standing at all? Can you, I mean, y- you could ask the selectmen to, to do it, but i- 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 do you see where I'm going, E-Town? You probably know the answer to this, I, I don't know what town council will say.
And I know the excerpt too, John, hi, John, it's good to hear your voice. Um, so it's, it's non-binding. It's really just, um, hearing from the citizens as elected officials of where their, their heads are at and their hearts are at, and how, how they would decide on an issue like this, to give guidance to the board.
Right, can you answer your question, John?
Okay, no, that, that, that's fine, I mean, it's, I just wanted to understand the context of it. Uh, uh, you know, again, um, I, I, I think everybody in the town has sort of the same ultimate objective of, you know, wanting to make the quality of life as, as they possibly can. They might, uh, arrive at different interpretations for something like this, and I think we should respect our differences. Um, again, I have no idea, you know, I'm sure somebody would speak in the opposite direction of this and make some interesting compelling points. Um, it certainly strikes me as, this is something that the Board of Selectmen should, should address. I mean, you know, I, I don't think it would take three years, but, uh, they certainly should address it and, and see if it's an appropriate thing to do or not.
If I can just, yeah, thank you, John, if I can just quickly add, um, the reason for the, you know, you, the question would be, geez, why a three-year moratorium, what, where does that arbitrary number come from? And looking at other towns, and there's about, um, eight in the North Shore, Concord had a three-year binding moratorium to really research it, and so we were just trying to model it after a reputable town, um, with thoughtful citizens that were really looking into this issue.
Yeah, I, I mean, from the zoning perspective, you could never have a three-year moratorium for anything because it's too long and too open-ended and too arbitrary. Um, but, you know, again, I think it comes down to, uh, I, I probably, you know, a little bit wary of it, but I don't fall the same way. I guess, I guess one question I would ask is, has any state, uh, at the state level, uh, sort of rejected the building of this, you know, and eliminated this possibility? Is there any state with heavy restrictions on it, or is this all at the local community level? And is it more places like Massachusetts than, than nationwide?
That's a great question, and I, you know, I, I'd be interested in the answer to that too, so I don't have an answer to that. I, I know of other towns outside of Massachusetts, um, that have also, uh, pursued a more cautious approach. Um, I know Washington State, when I, I read a study from Washington State, they had a increased, um, number of cancer cases by the women's soccer team, the women's coach in, at Washington State University kind of raised alarms. Um, and so there's an ongoing, um, uh, research by the University of Washington in that area, but I don't know of a statewide ban anywhere, but I haven't really done a, a complete, uh, land survey.
Good, thank you, Aaron.
Hi, this is Aaron. Um, I, I had a couple of questions, but, um, given that this is non-binding, um, I'm kind of wondering what the, the point is here. Um, I, I think I agree with somewhat what John was saying, which what I heard was that this maybe should be taken a different avenue, perhaps to the Board of Selectmen. I'm not sure why this needs to be a, uh, a warrant article, um, especially since it's non-binding. Um, that's all I have.
Okay, Peter?
Uh, this is Peter, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Um, would, I understand it's non-binding, but does three-year period have any significance with respect to any of the planned financing of the project? Does that put any of that in jeopardy?
Yes.
Can you elaborate?
Sure, well, I mean, the, as far as, well, as far as I know, uh, the middle school project, which would potentially be affected by this, I mean, there, I don't think there's been a decision that I'm aware of exactly what the fill would be, and that case is currently on appeal. Uh, they were supposed to have motions in April, I'm not, I assume those have been pushed off. But assuming that case, if it were to wrap up this year, I believe, you know, we'd be looking at the end of this year, beginning of next year, sometime next year, putting in place, going out to bid on, on, uh, synthetic turf at the, at the middle school field project. Certainly well within the three-year period.
And, and if I may, if you don't mind, um, again, this isn't a moratorium on laying down an artificial turf for the middle school project. It's just the infill. So you can use alternative infills and still have the artificial turf for the middle school.
Correct, and, and there may be a, you know, a better turf out there, I don't know, this just would limit the option for good or for bad.
Sure.
But we're hearing, this is Aaron, we're, this is Aaron, we're hearing that this is non-binding, so it doesn't limit anything.
Correct, correct, that, that's, that's a fair point, but if, if there was an actual moratorium, right? If this was a bylaw, or if this tied per strings, like, personally, again, this is A Town, I, I really don't like non-binding, um, anything. I mean, I think if you're gonna have a warrant article, get your bank for the buck, either it, you do something with it, or you don't, I, I, I'm not a fan of non-binding, so, I mean, it could be binding if you said this town can't spend money on, you know, um, chrome rubber. But again, I, I don't think I'd support it, I'm just saying, I, I also don't see the point in a non-binding article. I'd rather, you know, this be something that if citizens are really concerned about, that they bring to the Board of Health, that they ask the Board of Selectmen to put on as an agenda item. I agree with Aaron, I think that I, and kind of what John was getting at, that I don't think it needs to be a warrant article.
Well, this is Peter.
Oh, Peter, go ahead.
I'm sorry, can I make another comment?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Or you want someone else to go?
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, can the, uh, applicant comment on why, why non-binding?
Um, that's a good question, you know, I, I, as I said when I was talking about, I'm no expert in, which is true, I really am not, I am, uh, I oversee grants for the Massachusetts Department of Higher Education, my area is not in science. Um, I, I, I do though very much care about, you know, our world, the health of our planet, et cetera, um, and try to stay involved in, in, in issues in that way as much as I can. Um, and so when I was asked, actually at a, at a church coffee hour after our service, um, if I'd be interested in, in being a signatory, and then later, could I be the face of it? I agreed, but I don't know the impetus behind whoever's, which group of that group started it and why it was non-binding. I, I really couldn't tell you. I could find out though, if, if that's something that's very, of, of great interest to the board.
Well, I think it'd be, I mean, we're just making a recommendation from a planning perspective. I think if you're gonna bring an article to town meeting, I think that it's important to have that answer of why it's shaped the way it's shaped.
Okay, great, thank you.
Kate, any comments?
Um, I, I guess this is Kate. Anyhow, this is Kate. Um, just a question, would this retroactively apply to projects that have already been, in theory, permitted, even if?
So again, it's non-binding, um, it's about, i- if it were to be binding, I think it would, the way I read it, at least, it would apply to permitted projects. It doesn't seem like it would apply to reconstruction, like if they had to do the high school field again, but I, I don't know the answer to that. It's not really superiorly crafted that I could say whether it would apply to a, um, repair.
And I can just, I can tell you the intention was not to have, um, other fields resurfaced, um, but only for new construction was the intent, yeah.
But what if the high school, usually the, usually the, um, synthetic turf lasts about eight to ten years. I don't know when it was redone, but what if there's a turf field in town that comes up for needing to be repaired? And it's in this period, then what do you have, do you have to then tear out all the infill and put it with a new one? Or can you replace it with the one that, what it currently is made of, that's not really clear from this?
Okay, I see what you're saying.
So, it's got questions and issues as an article. Kelly, any thoughts?
No, I don't have anything new.
Okay, so my suggestion would be, we, I'm not really prepared to vote on this, I think it's still got open questions, so I'd say for now, we, we put it off until our next meeting, and we can always take a, you know, decide at, at town meeting as well. I think there's still too many questions about the purpose, the scope, and, uh, what it actually entails. Everyone good with that?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, great. Alright, thank you, Mr. Connor.
Okay, thanks for your time, have a good night.
You too, okay, uh, we're gonna go to, uh,
A Town, can I drop for one second?
Yes.
Could you ask if there's any public comment related to any of those warrant articles?
Very good, uh, is there any public comment, or do we have any public email or emails submitted, um, on any Article three, four, twelve, fourteen, or twenty-nine? And if you want to, anyone who's listening wants to submit an email, we'll give it some time to come in, and we can take the public comment. Monica, is there anything so far?
Nothing so far has come through.
Anything from anyone on the call? No, um, okay, so if we get any emails, if you, if members of the public want to comment or ask questions, uh, we'll keep those, they'll open, those discussion items open, so that we can take those if they come in. Okay, so Monica, if you get anything, please let us know. Thank you, Gene. Uh, why don't we move to, um, Mike Howard, Epsilon Associates, Inc., on behalf of North Andover Department of Public Works. Request for waiver of watershed protection district special permit.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chair, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Uh, good evening, folks, um, my name is Mike Howard from Epsilon Associates. Uh, I'm quote-unquote appearing in front of the planning board tonight, um, behalf of the Department of Public Works. Also on the phone this evening is Dan DeRoche from Vanass Associates. Vanass Associates is the transportation engineering firm that's been engaged by the town, um, to design a sidewalk product. That's the subject of this discussion matter with the commission tonight. Um, and as you correctly pointed out, Mr. Chair, on behalf of the DPW, we have requested a waiver of a special permit from the watershed protection bylaw. I do want to add, in parallel with this submittal to the planning board, or this request to the planning board, we have filed a notice of intent with, uh, the North Andover Conservation Commission. Um, given the, uh, COVID-nineteen situation, they have not held a public hearing on this matter yet, it's been postponed with no set date yet, um, so I appreciate you at least trying to advance the ball on the planning board front. Um, as, as described in staff's report to the pl- report to the planning board, it's a pretty straightforward project, um, the town is basically looking to construct two segments of sidewalk, um, the first segment, um, is essentially down, um, near, um, uh, just past the Butcher Boy Plaza, and the second segment is up near Sutton Street. Uh, the work is proposed on the east side, uh, the lakeside, if you will, all the sidewalk work is on the west side, um, there are also some other minor, um, pavement improvements and things like that, um, no stormwater upgrades, no new discharges, nothing like that, discharge into the lake. Uh, the notice of intent application has been filed with the Commission, and was, um, also copied to the planning board to give some backward information, um, depicts the limit of work, which is essentially the roadway layout, um, sidewalks will essentially be constructed on two, uh, kind of grass-stripped areas now, again on the west side of 125. Uh, during construction, contractor will obviously install sediment controls, which is shown on the permit drawings, uh, and catch basins would be present, excuse me, protected with silt sacks, things like that, so, uh, very straightforward project, um, limited in scope, uh, we're happy to answer whatever questions the Board might have regarding this request, and again, Dan is on if you have more technical questions regarding the design and so forth. Thank you.
Jean, Monica, is there anything you want to add before we go to Board members?
No, I think, Aton, um, the staff report, I've described essentially the scope of the project, I will add that the scope is really over impervious surface today, so it's not as though they're gonna be digging into pervious areas, um, there's currently either sidewalk or pavement that they will be, um, removing and reinstalling with sidewalk within the right of way. This is an extension of the MassWorks grant project associated with Princeton Properties, um, and it does contemplate bringing in the sidewalk all the way from Casablanca across the proposed senior center to Surrey Drive.
Okay, so I take it you have no concern?
I have no concerns, given that it's going through the review with Conservation Commission, and so they will have an order of conditions, and, um, segments are within the watershed, but not the entire project.
Okay. Uh, John, questions or comments?
Uh, no, I'm fine.
Aaron, questions or comments?
Uh, hi, this is Aaron, yeah, uh, Jean, uh, you said that there's no change in impervious surface area?
The, um, right, that's my understanding, the engineer's on the line, he can speak to that, but my understanding is it's already impervious, and that it'll be replaced with the constructed sidewalk and curb.
Dan, if you're, Dan, if you're not muted, can you speak to that question, um, for the planning board's, uh, benefit, please?
Yep, this is Dan DeRoche from Vanessa Associates, um, there is, the majority of the work is along the, it is all along the existing right of way, um, there is some existing grass areas that are being converted into walkways, um, so, uh, the, the area that are in the watershed limits are down near the, um, uh, intersection with Route 133, Great Pond Road, opposite that intersection, there's a 300-foot stretch of sidewalk that's replacing the dirt path that has been worn into the grass from people walking in that area, um, and we will be installing curbing along the edge of the road as well, you know, which will better direct the drain water to the catch basins that are on the edge of the road versus some of the, um, somewhat country drainage, even though everything is built up. As you continue down towards Sutton Street, there's the stretch in front of the mobile gas station is currently a mulch bed, it's being turned into a grass strip and a five-foot wide sidewalk, and that continues down to the intersection of Surry, of Sutton Street, and then, um, the crossing at the intersection with Sutton Street is all through impervious area, so existing, existing Delta Islands will be reconfigured to cut throughs with paved walkways, um, you know, instead of the paved median surface that's already there, so in that case, it's not changing from impervious.
Hey, this is Aaron again, so what I'm hearing is, is that there, there is some additional impervious surface area added, so what is, so how will the water that touches that from rainfall, how will that be diverted? How does that get diverted?
All of the, um, the typical sections for the grass strip areas that are in front of the sidewalk, and the sidewalk themselves are typically graded with a one and a half percent slope towards the roadway, so any, any water that lands on the impervious area will shed across to the grass strip, some will be absorbed into the grass strip, some will sheet across top of the curb and run down the gutter line to the closest catch basin, that is, uh, we're, we're not adding any additional, um, along 125, we're just realigning any catch basins along the new curb line. So there's one by the mobile station that's actually kind of recessed into the island, we're gonna move it out to the gutter line, because once we curb it, the water won't get, you know, into the island the way it is currently configured, and the catch basin down near the, um, intersection with 133 is already in place at the gutter line, it's in, uh, poor condition just from, you know, wear and tear, and where, you know, we're gonna replace it or upgrade the, the top and cover, uh, or the grate, so that it's, um, you know, sound. Currently, there's, you know, a small hole in the back of the structure, and, you know, some material has roded into the structure, so we'll fix that problem.
Okay, this is Aaron, I have nothing further.
Thank you, Aaron, I, I have nothing. Peter?
This is Peter, can you hear me?
Yes.
So, uh, two questions, I think probably for Dan, um, you've mentioned the two catch basins that are involved, uh, one at the intersection of 133 and the other by the gas station. Where do those catch basins, where, where do they drain into?
Um, from what I can tell, uh, the, the catch basin near the mobile station, uh, it currently drains across Route 125, there's another catch basin on the other side which is connected to, and then there's a pipe that runs off into the, um, uh, the resource area that's across the street from the mobile station. Um, so currently, that catch basin that's in front of the mobile station is just a catch basin within a mulched area, um, there's no curb, it's not a paved swale, so whatever water that runs in there has the potential to carry some of the mulch, or leaves, or whatever happens to, you know, land on the ground, when we're finished, the new catch basin will be, you know, in front of a curb line, so the only materials that will get washed into the catch basin is whatever is running down the gutter line of the road.
So that catch basin goes under 130, 125?
Correct.
And in, and then underneath where Mad Maggie's is, to that grass area bordering the lake?
Um, I think Mad Maggie's is a little further down, it's, it's almost, do you have our, the PDFs that were provided?
Yes.
If you look at page 51 of 61, that's, um, one of our plan sheets number six, so page 51 of 61.
I didn't mean Mad Maggie's, I shouldn't have said that, but that strip of stores on that side of 125, it's the grass area behind that strip of, um, stores, right?
I, I believe you're correct, yes.
And from there, it drains into the lake?
Uh, well, I believe it drains into a resource area that's not, not exactly the lake, but it's all, it's all tied together. I don't know if Mike can speak more towards the, uh, the wetland area conditions.
Mike, can you speak to that?
Yeah, sorry, I keep muting, and I'm muting myself. Uh, yeah, no, I mean, the wetlands are tributary to the lake, so essentially, it's discharging towards the lake, but there are wetland resource areas before you get to the surface of the lake itself, I think is what you're asking.
Yeah, and the work on the sidewalk by the catch basin by the gas station, will, and I understand what you're talking about with the curbing there, and, um, the benefits of that, does that in any way change the ability of any gasoline spill from the gas station getting into that catch basin, which then leads to the wetland area adjacent to the lake?
Um, the gas station island has, um, you know, is curbed behind it, uh, so if there were anything that spilled, like where the pumps were, it would be unlikely that it would run across the parking lot, up and over the curb, and get into where the catch basin is, even under today's condition, um, none of that will change, the, whatever's, the, whatever's at the back of the island is remaining the same, and the same, um, landscape area on the back half of that existing island will remain.
So there's no cuts being made associated with the sidewalk relative to the catch basin that would provide a new path for any, uh, gas spill at the gas station to get into that, um, culvert?
That is correct.
And my second question, um, actually related question, what about the, uh, catch basin by the intersection of 133, where does that drain?
That one drains straight across the street, um, to the corner where I believe that's the Mad Maggie's, the old, um, was it Treadwell's years and years ago?
Oh, yeah, you bet, Treadwell's, yep.
So that, that drains across to there, uh, oh, no, I'm sorry, that one, all right, sorry, I'm sorry, I had that backwards, from across the street on the corner by Treadwell's, there's another catch basin which pipes into this catch basin adjacent to the sidewalk, and then that runs, uh, it's hard to see, that one runs, I believe it runs out to the wetlands, the resource area directly behind it.
The same resource area where the one across from the gas station runs into, or a different one?
No, it's, it's, it's separated, um, yeah, twolitch, the PDF copy's not the greatest, you know what, let me open up my copy.
No, no, it's, it's a little hard to, yeah.
As, as far as I recalled, it comes across from the, from the, the Mad Maggie's side into this catch basin, which is labeled number eight, and then from there, it drains behind, like, towards the airport. So a separate resource area from the other one, you know, eventually, I believe everything connects to the water.
Yeah, I thought I was following you, but then when you said drains towards the airport, then you lost me.
Hold on, I am, just bear with me for one minute, I'm just gonna open up my own copy of the plan, so it's a little cleaner. I don't know if there was any other question, well, I'm, this is just gonna take a minute for me to open it up.
Yeah, I had one other question, and then I'll stop asking about this. My second question is, uh, um, in association with this sidewalk, are there any crosswalks across 125 associated with this, these sections of sidewalk?
Uh, there is not with this phase of it, um, the work that we're doing here is, as was mentioned, related to the, um, MassWorks grant, related to the Princeton project, we are utilizing the remaining monies from that grant to extend the sidewalk that was already constructed all the way down 125 to Sutton Street and up Sutton Street to connect to where the, um, the new, um, uh, Senior Citizen Center was being built, um, so there'll be connectivity from that site all the way down as far as the Mexican restaurant, um, the budget, you know, in order to cross the road at Great Neck Road, um, there was some significant design modifications that would need to be incorporated, and the budget that's available would not accommodate that, so we tried to maximize it going all the way down to the senior center.
Okay.
And, sorry, I got... Go on. All right, so... It's opening up now. Everything's a little slower being remote. So, okay, I, that's what I couldn't see, so, excuse me, it drains from Mad Maggie's into, um, the catch basin eight, then it goes kind of, um, as you're looking at the plan, up and to the right into an existing drain manhole that is, uh, in the grassed area today, and then that runs, uh, along 125. Uh, and, um, I believe it runs to the north, um, so then it, it goes off of this page, but it, so it runs, I don't know if you can see that drain manhole, it's just a few feet away from catch basin number eight, then there's a, a gray dotted line that runs to the right, right through the driveway of the Mexican restaurant, and there's another catch basin and manhole pair off of that page, and then that drains into the, um, the wetland area that is on the airport side, to the north of, to the, I guess, it's somewhat the north of 125 and the north of the, uh, the Mexican restaurant driveway.
Okay, all right, those are my questions, thank you.
All right.
Kate, anything from you, or Kelly?
Nothing new for me, this is Kate.
Kelly, you know?
Okay. Uh, anybody who's made comments, have any other comments? Are there any members of, uh, well, we don't need a public comment, so we don't have that, uh, okay, uh, can we get a motion to approve the, uh, request for a water, waiver of watershed protection district special permit?
Uh, this is John, so moved.
This is Kate, I'll second it.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
John Simon, yes.
Aaron Preston, yes.
Aton Goldberg, yes.
Peter Boynton, yes.
Kate Barnese, yes.
Very, very good, approved.
Thank you, folks, for your time, I appreciate it, hope everybody stays healthy, thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you, everybody.
We're now gonna move to continued public hearing, we're gonna do 210 Holt Road MMD shooting, I have to read a brief statement. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, Dental Law Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This public hearing of the planning board is being conducted by a remote participation, no in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but the public can listen to this meeting while in progress. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the hearing designated for public comment, uh, by emailing to, uh, Monica Gregoire, M-G-R-E-G-O-I-R-E, I think I spelled that right, at northandoverma.gov, again, M-G-R-E-G-O-I-R-E at northandoverma.gov. At any point, if you have a question or a comment that you wish us to address, please send that email, and we will, um, address the comments or questions. All right, um, Monica, could you please give us a synopsis of where we stand on this project?
Uh, yes, uh, can you hear me? This is, all right, fantastic, uh, this, uh, project was last before you, on January 7th, uh, where you opened the, the hearing, um, there were a number of outstanding issues at that time that, uh, you asked the applicant, uh, to go back uh, to go back and, and review. And one of those issues was about the, the parking. At that time, the building commissioner had not quite figured, um, what the appropriate number of spaces were. Um, as noted in your, uh, in your staff report, the building commissioner determined that seventy-seven spaces were required. And so what the applicants did was they submitted a revised, uh, project narrative, um, where they are asking for a multi-use, uh, facilities permit, uh, to allow for, for fewer spaces. Um, the project also went before, just for review before conservation, which had no concerns. Um, fire reviewed the revised plans and said that there were no concerns and that they would be reviewing, um, any, uh, plans after the fact, um, just to address any fire or life safety issues. Um, there was, there is one outstanding issue with health, who unfortunately kind of wrapped up in this whole COVID nineteen thing, but they were, uh, looking for, uh, some information re, in regards to the Title V inspection and, and design flow. So that's still outstanding. Um, police had no concerns, as, um, he said, he's not an expert in, um, in, um, range design, however, their range seemed in line with other, um, ranges that he's, uh, attended and, and used. Um, so before you now are, uh, is the revised narrative, a revised plan will still need to, to be submitted, kind of showing, um, the, the new parking spaces. They would also have need to include some basic information such as the dimensions of the, of the parking spaces. But that is where we, uh, we stand as a submission today.
And this still needs to go before the zoning board?
Yes, this is still outstanding with the zoning board. Um, their next hearing's date has yet to be determined.
Okay, uh, Attorney Foley, are you online with us?
This is Jennifer Thompson with MMD shooting. You may need to do the star six on his phone.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Kevin Foley, can you hear me?
We can.
You can.
Excellent, uh, this is Kevin Foley. I'm a thirty-two-year resident of North Andover, fifty-two Hewitt Ave. And I also have a law practice and new report. I, I represented at the petitioner, MMD shooting, and the applicant, uh, Jennifer Thompson, who you just heard for, who's on the line with us this evening. And as Monica mentioned, it's a continued hearing regarding our application for a special permit for recreational use of a shooting range in industrial zone and also common parking with a multi-use facility. Uh, I actually appeared before the board back on December the seventeenth, two thousand nineteen. That seems like a lifetime ago. A lot has happened in the world and with our application in the last four months. But I'm gonna try to cover that in just a minute, Mr. Chairman, of procedurally what has happened on, um, after the December seventeenth hearing, uh, we were rescheduled or continued until January the twenty-first. Uh, I requested a continuance on January the sixteenth, uh, sought a continuance from the board, uh, in order to prepare revised plans, narrative, response to questions and concerns raised by the board regarding a number of issues, including air quality, noise, parking, retail sales component in the operations governance of the proposed facility. And, uh, that continuance was granted, uh, to be extended to, uh, March the twenty-fourth. And of course, um, it was continued till this evening because of the emergency coronavirus issue. And so since, um, the twelfth of December, when I appeared before the board, we've been to the ZVA twice, on the fourteenth of January, on the tenth of March, uh, we're going back there as soon as they reschedule. Uh, they had similar issues to what I just described. And, uh, as you're already aware, we have, uh, an engineer, Green Seal, we have an architect, Port One, we also hired a, um, firearm safety consultant, a noise consultant who's an acoustical engineer, and I'll discuss a little bit what they came up with tonight. On, uh, February the twenty-eighth, we provided the supplemental and revised narrative and plans and drawings that you have in your packages this evening. On March the twelfth, I provided the planning board and the ZVA with, um, further detailed architectural sketches and construction of the HVAC system in a study by our acoustical engineer. On March the sixteenth, we, at the request of the planning, uh, department, we provided copies of everything that we have submitted, uh, to the planning board and to the ZVA to both the chief of police and the fire chief, uh, to let them know what we're doing. I understand on March the eighteenth, uh, the chief of police sent an email to planning indicating, as Monica just mentioned, that he didn't have, uh, didn't really have, had a favorable opinion of the plans, basically. Uh, I'm gonna discuss briefly those areas, concerns, and questions that I just mentioned. I'll be less than five minutes. Um, but before I do that, though, I just wanna mention, uh, briefly, a word about our applicant, Jennifer Thompson, who's on the line. She's a fourteen-year resident of North Andover. She's married to Jeff Thompson, uh, who's one of the owners of the property of two-ten Holt Road, and they run a recycling, uh, uh, recycling facility up there. One time, um, Northside Cottling was operating up there until it was sold a couple of years ago. Um, uh, Jennifer is married to Jeff, they've been married for twelve years, they have two school-aged children, um, they live here in North Andover, the children are eight and nine years old. She has a bachelor's degree in finance and an MBA from Regis. Uh, she grew up around firearms and really, uh, what prompted her to seek this application for a special permit, she wants to create a state-of-the-art facility and a retail operation. And really, uh, with live shooting, with airgun shooting, with virtual shooting, with training rooms, um, there's a, there's an educational component, uh, that is, um, that is really essential and integral to this, um, project, um, in the proper handling and use, and safe use of firearms. Um, and so, um, you know, having a, another woman-owned business in North Andover wouldn't be a bad thing, but it also would be an excellent thing to have as a resource, uh, for law enforcement and those with licenses to carry, both in North Andover and in the area for the proper and safe use of firearms. On a personal note, I've known Jen Thompson and Jeff for some time now, they're very conscientious people, care deeply about North Andover and wouldn't do anything that would be detrimental. So as we discuss the operations and governance, construction, noise, air quality and the like, um, I wanna let you know that they wanna do what's best for the community. After all, it's in their best interest really to ensure that this facility is safe for all those who work there, all those members who are members there and all the guests who visit there. With regard to operations, uh, governance and retail, on, uh, the sixth of March, uh, we applied to the North Andover Chief of Police for a license to operate the shooting range in accordance with, uh, Mass General Law's Chapter one forty, Section fifty-six A. That's in the chief's, uh, uh, under state law, that's the chief's responsibility to, uh, issue a license for the operation of a shooting range in the Commonwealth. All these statutes that I'm referencing, Mr. Chairman, I've provided in the packet. And also to operate a small retail part of this, which is to be the sale of firearms and ammunition, uh, that's, um, in the chief's province as well, under Chapter one forty, Section one twenty-two and one twenty-two B. If we're successful, uh, both with, um, the planning board, the ZVA, with the chief of police, and, um, and we're successful in getting the license to operate the shooting range, we'll have to comply with all state, uh, laws and federal laws with regard to firearms, including the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security and the Attorney General Regulations that I provided in the package. All, any sales that we made up there, by the way, would have to be reported to the Massachusetts Department of Criminal Justice and Information Systems. Uh, any violations, uh, would be reported to the chief of police and, and under state law, Chapter one forty, one twenty-three, the chief can suspend or revoke a license, um, in his sole discretion. So would be provided, um, the board with copies of all those sections of the, of the statute. So it's really something that's pending before the chief. It's one of the reasons, uh, that we brought Mr. Gallo on board, uh, to assist us with that. We look forward to working with the chief and his representatives if we're successful with, um, the board and, uh, with the ZVA. So that's, that's pending. I know it's one of the questions you asked last time, Mr. Chairman. So that's what's happening with the operation, the governance and the retail part of it. With regard to the parking, um, I'll try to make this brief, uh, our engineer, we had worked with our engineer and we'd prepared calculations based on certain categories in the North Andover bylaw. And they're provided in Table one of the, uh, of the two-twenty-eight supplemental revised submission, that, that categorizes by certain uses of, of, of the facilities. And it's in that narrative on, uh, page, uh, two. Um, and we calculated that we would need fifty-two spaces would be needed under the, under those standards. Um, uh, page five of our narrative, uh, we proposed, uh, having forty-three spaces, um, as indicated with a, with a nine-space reduction, uh, from the standard. However, on March the sixth, to shorthand all of this, I, we met with the, uh, building inspector, and we now agree with his calculations on, on what the, the proper amount of parking spots, the standard for parking spots and that, for this, uh, use, which would be based on the, uh, proposed size of the facility. So he's, the, the, the building inspector has calculated that at seventy-seven spaces. We're proposing forty-three. So we're really looking for a, um, a reduction of thirty-four spaces from the standard. Um, and, and the bylaw allows this under, um, eight-point-eight D-five-A. It allows for such a reduction when the hours and the days and the peak parking times are so different for the multi-use facility that a lower total amount of the spaces will adequately provide for all the uses and activities on the site. And so, um, the, um, the shooting range hours, we're, we're looking at somewhere between ten AM and seven PM on the weekdays, and then ten AM to maybe nine PM on the weekends. Um, the current use for the garage and the maintenance facilities, although TBI is open, you know, six AM to five PM and Saturdays until noon time, uh, that's really for people dropping off materials at the scale house. Um, um, it, it really, um, in, in other words, what, what we're looking for really is basically the range peak hours, our evenings and weekends, as opposed to the garage, which is re, really earlier in the day and not much on the weekends at all. So I, I think we're kinda looking for some guidance from the planning board on what might be required. I, I remember when I met with you on the, the seventeenth of December, one of the comments that Mr. Simons made was that there's plenty of parking up there because it's a large site, it's almost eight acres. So it, it isn't that we could not accommodate seventy-seven spaces, but, um, from what we're projecting, I don't think we're gonna need anywhere near that amount. So what you have in your plans is, shows forty-three spaces and where they would be located. If, if the board feels in the wisdom that we ought to have more than that, we certainly have room for that. And a, at that point, we would revise our plans. And one of the things that Monica had asked us to do is to make sure we put the standard size of the parking space, the width, the depth and all that stuff on the plans themselves, which, which are presently not on the plan. So that, that's where we stand on the parking. Subpart B of, of that, uh, that, uh, bylaw, eight-point-eight D-five, uh, requires a formal parking study unless it's waived by the planning board. And I, and I guess, given the low impact and the number of, uh, what we're talking about here, I'm asking the board to waive that. Subpart C only applies when there's more than one owner, there's only one owner up there. So, so that, that's where we stand on the parking, Mr. Chairman. Uh, with regard to the construction, uh, there were questions about the strength a, and, and the, uh, of the, of the walls, the ceilings, um, and also the HVAC system. Um, wha, what we're taking is, uh, seventy-five hundred feet of an existing building that's fifteen thousand square feet, but then we're using a second level, so altogether, we're gonna have fifteen thousand square feet. On, on the bottom floor, th, and you have sketches on this, you're gonna have, uh, ranges, you, you're gonna have, uh, a range A and a range B. Um, each one of those ranges will have six bays in them, so, for a total of twelve bays for live shooting on the first floor. Um, the rear wall of those ranges are gonna be solid, uh, solid-filled, uh, twelve-inch block, concrete block. Uh, the walls going down the sides are eight-inch solid, uh, filled, uh, concrete block. Uh, there is a wall between range A and range B, so you have six ranges and a wall, six, six more bays and a wall, uh, on the first floor. Then on the ceiling, um, there is, there's a, um, there's gonna be a, 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 a twelve, twelve-inch solid concrete floor between the first and second floor. Okay? And so, um, it, all along the, uh, walls and the ceiling, there's gonna be, um, there's gonna be, um, cold rubber panels and, and there's gonna be a granular rubber bullet trap at the end wall for live shooting, so that there's no ricochet and safety and so forth. Uh, I'll get into the noise in, in a bit, but, um, the, the second floor is the airgun. Again, you'll have a twelve-inch floor, eight-inch solid walls on the side, and a twelve-inch solid wall with a pellet trap down the end. The HVAC system, um, is sort of spelled out a little bit in the narrative that we proposed, both from our Port One, uh, architects and from, um, Clean Air Technologies, and they'll let it to you, basically saying that the, um, that the, uh, pretend that the, uh, there is really no, we're gonna be well below the, uh, the minimum prohibited lead exposure for anybody that's in the facility. And basically with the HVAC system that they're gonna have in place, there'll be no lead whatsoever escaping that facility at, at all. Um, with regards to noise containment, uh, we hired an acoustical engineer with forty years' experience, who's, uh, worked on a wide range of applications and visited the site. And, uh, he, he took some readings, uh, that, potential readings that would be on the inside and the outside of the facility. Um, and he used Google Maps, although the, currently there isn't an existing residential property within a half mile. Of course, the Princeton properties are underway and under construction. And under Google Maps from the lot line, it's about nineteen hundred feet from where we are. Um, the, the, uh, noise consultant used fifteen hundred feet, uh, as a test and, and showed a, um, i, if you're in Princeton Properties, there'd be a twenty-three B, which is well below background noise, which is thirty decibels. And, uh, that does, so that twenty-three B didn't include absorption of ground and so forth. He, he made a presentation, and unfortunately it wasn't available to, under these circumstances to be with us tonight, but he made a presentation to the ZVA about this. Essentially, if you're at Princeton Properties, um, it's gonna be a nineteen B, uh, nineteen decibels. Uh, so there's, there's just no chance that you're gonna hear any sound from, uh, gunshots inside the facility. I mean, just outside, the outside wall of the facility, it's seventy-nine dB. To give you an idea, seventy-five dB is what you'd hear at, in a restaurant. That's the, that's the lo, the, uh, the noise level that you would hear in a, in a restaurant, if we all remember being in restaurants months ago. Um, so that, that's just outside the rear wall. So the property line, it drops to forty, forty-eight dB. Um, so basically, you're never gonna hear it from outside. Uh, inside, um, there is, um, we put in, uh, noise reduction barriers, um, that absorb, and, and these are, this is included in the sketches provided by the, uh, the architectural, all along the, uh, the walls, there's, um, acoustical panels, kinetic noise control curtains and, uh, absor, absorption panels for noise inside the facility. So, um, basically, on either, on the side of where the maintenance garage, next to the range where the live, uh, rounds are gonna be held, there'd be a sixty-nine. And, um, down range would be one thirty-two, from where the shooter is would be one forty-three. Um, and then, of course, the walls would be lined, the ceiling would be lined, upstairs would be somewhere around a sixty, but that could be attenuated further by, by putting in wall-to-wall carpeting or other items in the upstairs. But you, essentially, the noise is not gonna be an issue inside the facility or outside the facility because of the, uh, absorption panels in, in the booths and along the walls and along the ceiling. Um, and of course, anybody who is gonna be using the facility is gonna have to wear protective, um, uh, protective eyewear and protective headphones and earware, no exceptions. And so, um, so that, that's where we stand on all that. Um, you know, w, we are seeking certain waivers, um, because it's an existing facility. On page six of our, uh, revised narrative, we're seeking a waiver of the stormwater drainage map, stormwater drainage map, a waiver of the stormwater management plan, a waiver of the landscaping plan, a waiver of the traffic impact study, a waiver of the fiscal impact and a waiver of the community impact because of the, just the size of, and the scope of the, um, proposal is really a seventy-five by twenty-five foot addition to an existing building. Um, really, it's a, it's, the, the site is really a, a very specific and appropriate site for the shooting range. It's not gonna a, adversely impact anything around that neighborhood, it's an industrial zone. There'll be no nuisance or serious hazards to any, um, any vehicular traffic or pedestrians, not in a residential area. And as proposed, um, it's adequate and appropriate for the appropriate, uh, operation. And as proposed, um, it's adequate and appropriate for the appropriate, uh, operation of a shooting range. And so for all those reasons, I hope the board will, uh, will approve it. And, uh, at this time, Mr. Chairman, I'll just wave for any questions that people may have.
Great, thank you. Uh, John?
I'm fine.
Great. Uh, Aaron?
Uh, hi, this is Aaron. Yes, it's been a while since we, uh, sat in on this, uh, this specific application. And I'm just curious if we could go back just, I, I, you know, we, we, we've talked about parking. Are there any other site improvements that are to be done, say lighting, paving, that kind of thing?
The, the, um, the, the, uh, the, the construction is only going to be a twenty-five by seventy-five. It's, it's an existing building and, and so there isn't any real changes to, to any of the landscaping or the lighting or the, or the, um, the drainage. It has an existing drainage system, uh, that's provided in your packets. Um, so there's not going to be any other, there's going to be no need for any changes to that. Uh, there, there will be, obviously, we'll have to line out those parking spots. Uh, and, and you have something in your packages that shows where we're proposing, uh, to, to put the parking, but we have ample room, as I say, if the, if the board doesn't think that forty-three spaces would be enough, we, we have room to put, uh, put additional spaces because it's a, it's a large, uh, it's a large parcel, it's almost eight acres.
This is Aaron, nothing further.
Thank you, Aaron.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Peter. Um, thanks for, um, the update and addressing the questions and nothing further.
Thank you, Peter. Okay.
Um, this may be not necessarily on point to what we're reviewing, but just, uh, out of curiosity, the retail component of this, is this something that we have control at a town level or is that governed on a state level?
Yeah, that, that's really, that's a good question. That's really something that's governed by the chief of police. He's designated under state law, um, to licensing any, any retail for selling firearms and ammunition. Uh, and one of the things I, I wanted to, to mention is that, um, you know, we're, we're sensitive to the lead issue and we're, what we're going to propose is any ammunition that we sell up there is going to be low lead ammunition. Uh, but we have an air gun component to this, uh, because shooting live ammunition is so expensive that we want, you get the same sort of a, um, training and feel using the air guns. So the upstairs, the ranges, the bays upstairs are all going to be air gun, CO2 air gun. So it looks like a gun, but it's shooting a pellet.
Thank you.
Kelly?
I don't have any additional questions, no.
Kevin, I have one question and one comment. Is there an age range, uh, limit for going in?
For going in as a guest or going in to shoot?
Yeah, uh, yeah, either. Do you have to be able to turn age to, to enter?
Well, you, 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 uh, someone would not be able to enter by themselves if they're under twenty-one. They'd have to have someone twenty-one or older with them, uh, to enter. Um, but one of the things that we want to make available for, you know, uh, people that are in the scouts or, or, um, learning how to shoot, young adults, um, accompanied by either a member or someone over twenty-one, they could come in and, and shoot. So right now, we're not put, we, we did not put any, any age limit on it. It's something we want to discuss with the chief.
Okay, but obviously that's separate from the live ammunition shooting.
Well, wh- what do you mean?
So, I mean, are fifteen-year-olds able with the vision to come in and shoot rifles? Or are you talking about shooting the, the air pellet?
No, I'm, I'm talking about live shooting. I thought that's what your question was. So i- i- if you had a member who had a fifteen-year-old, uh, son or daughter that wanted to come in and, and, uh, have that, uh, that young adult, well, that youngster learn how to shoot, I suppose they, that they could shoot, you know, like a twenty-two pistol or something like that, or if they were, if they, um...
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that, I guess, I agree with Kate, that's more for the chief. I mean, that's definitely, you know, you see news articles about, you know, terrible things that have happened in shooting ranges with, especially with kids, so I'm sure that that would be a draft. Um, okay, I, I, my comment was, I think this presentation was, you know, leached and bound, uh, ahead of where we started and you guys did a great job of answering our questions. I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, um, so I think we're waiting on ZBA to act and, and Monica, is there anything else we need before, you know, drafting a decision?
Um, so again, you're waiting for the, the ZBA and then we're waiting for that one outstanding issue about the totality with, with health, but that one is a relatively minor issue. They just need to go ahead and submit whatever they need to, to, to the health department. So I would say you're waiting for the ZBA. Um, I'm not quite sure when they'll be able to meet again, but that's, that would be what we're waiting for.
Okay. Do we have a next hearing date? Meeting date?
Well, I, if all goes well, uh, our next hearing date should be May fifth. But again, it depends on, you know, where we are with the, uh, with the situation.
Okay. Uh, are, have we received any public questions or comments?
I have not seen any come through on this.
Hey, Tom, this is Jean. Can I ask a couple of questions?
Please.
Um, so Monica, I trust the building commissioner has deemed the retail as an accessory use to the recreation unit?
Yes, he has.
Okay. Um, as far as the shared common facility parking, does the board have any sense of what would be an acceptable number? So the building commissioner's deemed seventy-seven, we're yet to receive revised plans showing how many they can accommodate. Um, is there, is there a sense as to a target number they, you feel they should get to?
I, I'm, I don't really have a problem with the forty-three, maybe up to fifty, but I just don't see fifty cars there at one time. That, that seems, um, that doesn't seem realistic. It doesn't seem to me like there'll be more than thirty or thirty-five really at any one time.
And there's plenty of, there's plenty of on-street parking as well, to be honest. So whole road's a very long road. Um, so I guess you would have to also waive the full-blown traffic study as well. Um, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I mean, I don't, I don't have any particular problems with any of the waivers requested. If anyone does, I'd ask you to speak up.
No, this is Aaron. Um, I, I don't, but I would just like to further add, it looks like from the floor plans that are, there are twelve, uh, shooting booths, uh, on the first floor and twelve on the second, so you're talking about twenty-four shooting booths. So in terms of the parking, seems to be in line with the, the number that would use the facility at any one time.
And this is Monica. I just want to point out too, that there's also the lounge here in the, in the retail space and those were, um, some, two, so, two additional spaces that the building commissioner took into account when, um, when he was coming up with the, um, parking figure.
So hearing no other public, no public comment, no other questions, why don't we continue this for May fifth and we'll wait and see what we get with the ZBA. If, if they haven't met, we may need to continue this out, but let's keep working towards drafting our decision pending their, um, their vote.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board.
Thank you, Attorney Paul.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, can we get, uh, sixteen hundred Osgood?
Hey, Tom, this is Kate. I have to recuse myself on this, I have a conflict.
Bernadette has recused herself from sixteen hundred Osgood.
Hi, this is Monica, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, great. Um, and I just want to make sure that, um, all the parties are online for this as well. Um, I'll just give you an update on where we stand on, on this. The applicant actually has provided a, uh, a slideshow for you, um, but I just want to point out, um, that, um, all the peer reviews have been, um, have been completed. Um, they've provided, uh, conditions. So one thing you do want to talk about tonight is the, is the traffic. I didn't, um, have a, uh, conference call, uh, with the applicant's engineer and our DPW, um, was it, uh, on, on Monday in regards to, um, the traffic as there were several intersections that might be slightly impacted, um, by traffic. Um, you'll see a letter from our, our DPW basically indicating that, um, several intersections, um, actually are, have potential changes that are going to be made, um, in regards to, actually those are attached to other, uh, projects. So one of them was the Avalon projects where there's going to be some, uh, low-cost intersection changes along, uh, High Street. Um, there's also going to be, um, some other changes on, uh, associated with, um, Main Street and, and Waverly that the town is looking to make some changes in terms of a downtown improvement. Um, so other than that, um, they're still waiting on the applicant to submit to Mastod. Um, so we haven't, they haven't submitted, or at least we haven't received word that they've submitted an application onto, to Mastod. Also, there's been some, uh, changes actually to the, the application. Initially, the applicant was looking for a definitive subdivision and now they, they're looking for an, an A and R plan, which they'll be submitting at some point in the future. And then also, you'll, you'll see my comments in the staff report, just asking you to revisit the, uh, TMA membership. And this is something that you've actually put in as a condition, um, in regards to the Avalon project. Um, and with this being a, a large project, this is probably something you want to consider considering there is, um, a single bus lane that runs past the, uh, facility, which runs hourly. Um, so there's definitely some other, maybe some other options out there that, um, that Avalon, I'm sorry, that Amazon may want to consider just to make it easier for applicants to, I'm sorry, for, um, employees to reach the site, but also, uh, lessen any potential, uh, traffic, um, on, on the site.
Okay, so why don't we hear from the applicant?
Uh, you may need to unmute yourself.
If you're calling in, you may have to hit the star six, I believe.
Hi, this, this is John Plant from Langen Engineering. I think John Smolak is on the call. I'm not sure why he is not, um, able to speak here, but, uh, I can, um, uh, let's see, walk us through, um, uh, let's see, let me get to, well, um...
This is Peter, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, John, if you can hear me, um, I don't know if you heard the other folks, but, uh, I'm like a typical conference call where all you have to do is hit the mute button on your iPhone. For this call, you have to hit star six in order to unmute. So you might want to try star six. Uh, go ahead, thanks for, sorry to interrupt.
No problem. Well, while he's trying to get on, why don't we move to, uh, uh, page three of the presentation? This is the, uh, water peer review. And to address that, uh, Tim O'Neill from my office will, uh, take this in the next slide on. Go ahead.
Thanks, John. Yeah, can everyone hear me? Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, yeah, so John said, Tim O'Neill of Langen Engineering. And on, uh, page three, you'll see our water peer review memo that we just received. Uh, we did cover all of their items, uh, requested and in this memo, they state that the revised information provided by Langen has addressed initial review comments. There's three items you see listed on there, just coordination items. Item number eleven, which is to continue coordination with the North Andover Fire Department, which is ongoing. Item number fourteen, which is to confirm that there's no interconnect between the domestic and fire services, which there are not. And item fifteen, which is a request to submit the as-built record drawings in PDF and AutoCAD formats, which we do plan on doing. So other than those, the Weston Sampson peer review comments should be closed out for the water services. Then if you switch to page four, you'll see the Woodard and Kern sewer peer review memo. And this memo was received on March sixteenth in response to Langen's January twenty-fourth comment response letter. Uh, in this letter, they state that Woodard and Kern is in agreement with Langen's responses. Uh, all of the comments, one through twelve and fourteen, have been fully addressed. Comment number thirteen, bullet one, has been addressed. And then bullets two through six deal with the existing sanitary sewer main conflicts with proposed utilities. Uh, this shouldn't be an issue because in the final condition, those existing lines will be removed and the sanitary system redesigned and placed elsewhere. Uh, their main concern is continuing service to the existing buildings twenty and twenty-one throughout site work and construction. And for this, we have some temporary conditions that will be in place, which are more of a construction phasing, um, uh, sequencing, which we will respond to them and clarify. In their letter, they say, this is good unless there are other arrangements, unless there are other arrangements made in place, which we do have, and I'd be happy to get into if we need to. Uh, but with that, I'll turn it over to John Plant for the, uh, dressing peer review memo.
Thanks, Tim. Uh, yes, if you look at, uh, page five of the, uh, presentation, this is just a copy of the last, um, peer review by TEC of the traffic. Um, we've been working, uh, first, excuse me, uh, my name's John Plant, I'm a managing principal with Langen Engineering and, uh, professional engineer with over thirty-five year experience. And, um, we, we conducted a, a pretty significant traffic impact study in, in relation to this, this redevelopment of sixteen hundred Osgood. We prepared a, a traffic impact study and, uh, conceptual improvement plans that, uh, show the, the potential impact of the redevelopment and, uh, what mitigation, uh, we're proposing for that. Uh, we have, uh, s- submitted to, uh, excuse me, back, uh, in September or October, I should say, maybe August of last year, uh, was when we started our peer review with TEC. Uh, they re- they, uh, created their first round of comments to which we responded to on, uh, March twenty-fourth, um, of this year. And then they had a second round of comments, uh, dated the thirty-first of March, which we responded to on March eighth. Uh, we have closed out, uh, their comments, um, based on their, their letter. And we, uh, as Monica mentioned, with, uh, John Bergazi of TPW Town Engineer, about some questions on some other, uh, intersections within the town jurisdiction. And as Monica pointed out, the, the stations are going to be built as part of, uh, an improvement. We didn't really have any impact on them. We had some traffic going through there, but we didn't really have any impact on the operations. But, um, part of the Avalon approval will be addressing design of one location and minor improvements at another location. So, so we've been through the peer review, uh, with them. Um, I think the only outstanding issue... The only outstanding issue there is is something we we said we'd be the developer would be agreeable to a post Amazon opening study to evaluate the traffic volumes produced by the full development build out. As you know, there's a number of phases to this development components. So the some of the improvements that we're proposing to mitigate our impacts. First, I think you realize, you know, the infrastructure area of town going up to 495 is pretty robust. Handle the fairly large user in the previous life of this facility and certainly large employee counts over 10,000 employees. We're we're looking at around, you know, little 2,000 plus or minus employees here, 1,800 depending on, you know, their operations. And we're proposing to mitigate our traffic is is we're separating out there today. There are four driveways that are out there that serve the development. The northerly and southerly driveway, we're segmenting out. They have the traffic signals out there today. What we're going to be doing is upgrading that signal equipment with new modern signal equipment at both locations. And the northerly traffic signal, which today is just flashing, will be the truck access and employee access, but trucks will only be going in that that intersection and that and that will be changed from the flashing back to a full full signal as it was originally. We're also going to be extending on the northbound approach to that southerly driveway. We're going to be extending the left turn storage lane to 350 feet to the left turns beyond where the existing storage length equals today. And we're also going to be do a couple of other locations within the study area. Some signalization optimization to improve those operations there. So we looked at 20 intersections. A fairly large scope of a study and, you know, and identified where our traffic was coming from and where it was going and address that accordingly. And again, we we're think we're pretty closed out. We're closed out with the the peer review. We are ongoing with DOT. They've been a little slower than than we have liked. That's why between now or between September and now was took to close out with TEC because we are still ongoing with Mass DOT. And we submitted for permit yet. We're submitting information for them to we're ready to submit the permit, but we just want to go through the steps with them to so they're on board with it. So that that was another comment by TEC, which we fully agree with. We'll keep planning board and the staff and for those communications with Condot, Condot, excuse me, Mast dot. And what what comes out of that that review of their permit application? So that's where we're at with 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 the traffic. Monica had mentioned this. We we met early on with the Merrimack Valley Transit Authority about this project and let them know that it was coming and that we would expect that the ridership demand on them would increase with this facility to the locations that they operate in. And they're aware of it and those those conversations continue. We have provided provisions in the site plan for for pickup and drop off adjacent to the building as well as there's a there's a drop off in in the front along Ozgood Street. And so what we find with this with this tenant, the industrial tenant, is that there's been a significant amount of of ride sharing, both carpooling and ride sharing services like Uber or Lyft where multiple people pool from a certain location and will come and get dropped off. And so we've provided safe provisions for that. The tenant has been experiencing that at other locations. So we've incorporated that into the site design also. So I think what we've proposed is it mitigates the the traffic impact. Most of our our traffic impact or our traffic peak periods are outside the peak periods of the roadway. We analyzed both just to show what both conditions would be. So that was in the in the report that the peer reviewer reviewed also. So I'm happy to answer any questions when you're ready. With that, John Smolak, are you on? I might have to try to do his. Okay.
Let me see. Are there any questions about this particular these particular points or comments, John?
I'm fine.
Aaron?
This is Aaron. I have nothing.
Peter?
Sorry for the delay. All set. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Kate? No, she recused. Kelly?
I do not.
I don't either. John, I know Attorney Smolak was going to talk about the lot rearrangement. So if someone's able to talk about that, great.
We yeah, we can cover it. Tim is very familiar. Tim is the one that's been preparing these plans. So we'll let Tim get dated on that. So thank you.
Sure. All right. So again, Tim O'Neil with Langen Engineering and bear with me. Do my best to get through these slides, but if you flip to page six, you'll see what we have right now for the accessories lot. And you'll see the magenta highlighted lines. Those are the existing three lots that are on site right now. And then if you flip to the seventh page, you'll see that we'll be combining Ozgood Landing with the main lot in step number one, which would eliminate the lot lines shown in blue here. And you'll keep the magenta lot lines. So that would be the first step. And then moving on to page eight, we'll combine the north lot and the Holt Road lot into the main line to a single lot. So you'll see that the the blue line is now going to be resolved. I'm sorry, the the magenta lines will be maga will be dissolved and will create a single lot on the main lot.
Hi, this is this is Brian Vaughn. Am I am I on the line now?
Oh, Brian, yes, we can hear you. Yeah.
Okay, I I apologize. I was having difficulties with being muted too. And and John Smolak was going to handle this, but Tim, I just wanted not to interrupt you. I just want to let you know that I'm here as well and I can I can help walk us through this if if you'd like.
Yeah, no, that that'd be good. I think if you want to start back up on page six, just to reiterate what I was saying before, a little bit more description to it, good.
Right, okay. And and I apologize for having some technical difficulties. I was I was trying to hop in earlier, folks, and was apparently just talking to myself here. But in in any event, the kind of the overall issue here is it's driven by some DPU regulations with respect to the the solar system. And it not being, you know, the the process for relocating it and moving it and not being able to have the system cross over lot lines. So kind of as as Tim had suggested, the the slide on page six shows the lots as they they existed. We're going to be combining the lots on on sheet seven, the the first step was was to combine where the magenta line was those those two lots to address what was you can see where the the solar system technically cross over the lot line there. So that was to resolve an an issue with the existing system where it wasn't allowed to cross over that lot line. So that that piece has actually already been done. Then what's being proposed to be done next, if you flip over to to slide eight, is to eliminate the the two remaining lot lines shown in magenta, which will essentially create one large, single lot. Once we have the 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 single lot in place, we'll be able to then flipping over to to lot nine, relocate the the portions of the the solar system as shown from what will would be lot B, the ground roof and and ground mount to the rear of the site over to the lot C area. And then flipping over to to lot 10, the reconfigured lot would keep lot B substantially in its format as as you've seen it in the past. And then would have lot A and C combined into one single lot. And that would keep us in compliance with the the DPU regulations so that we would have all of the solar being on a on a single lot. Moving to to slide 11. And in order to to do this, I should say that what was formerly the the subdivision roadway would be turned into an exclusive for permanent access easement for the benefit of of lot B.
I'm sorry. Hear me now? I just it's John Smolak.
Hello. Hi, John. Welcome on.
Hi.
I apologize. I apologize for that glitch. So if I if I may just continue on to what Brian Brian was saying about slide 11. Go for it. Slide 11 was is just it shows you sort of an optional step five, which would really bring us back to the proposed site layout that you're reviewing before we started this discussion this evening. And so as we say on that on that slide, step five is an optional an option for Hillwood and Amazon to return back to the original subdivision proposal. And the reason again why we're not why we're combining the lots at this time is is because of the fact that it would require a a petition process that takes eight to 16 months, which we're trying to avoid by undertaking the relotting that we're discussing here this evening. So just moving on to lot 12, as as Brian has indicated, basically what we would be doing in terms of the configuration is after the solar is moved from the area that's considered lot B, it would be we would create the two separate lots, which would be the via the A and R process, which would be lot B, which is about 110 acres. And then lot a new revised lot A, which combines lot A and C and the subdivision roadway, what was identified as the subdivision roadway into a single lot, 57 and a half acres approximately. With the result that we would need a permanent access easement running from Ozgood Street across the newly formed lot A to the Amazon lot, which is lot B. So from a permitting perspective, it doesn't really change much. And what I wanted to say at the very outset, before I ran into technical glitches, is that basically the what you have reviewed to date in terms of the improvements that are shown on the plans will not be changing. And this is simply an exercise to modify the lotting such that we can move the the solar array from lot B over to a combination of the existing solar buildings 20 and 21 and on the formerly proposed lot C. So in in terms of what Monica had suggested initially, we would with a change of of lotting, we would need to go through the definitive subdivision process currently. What we could do is either withdraw or simply continue to the end of the year without action, but we could discuss that at a subsequent hearing. Again, lot B would continue review as a conforming A and I lot. Was the only change that the again, that the subdivision roadway would now be part of lot A. And so the only substantive change in terms of permitting would be that we'd need an additional solar setback modification special permit under the under the solar energy systems bylaw 8.88 point B2. That provision provides that all large scale ground model solar systems have to be installed either in the side yard or the rear yard and be located no nearer the street than the building line of the principal structure. So with a new lock configuration, what's happened here is now that the solar array on that that was on the portion of the lot that was formerly known as lot C is closer to the setback of Ozgood Street than buildings 20 and 21. We would need a a modification, solar energy system modification special permit in addition to the other special permits we need for setbacks in the side and rear yards that you've been currently reviewing. So and this would be allowed again through the recently amended zoning bylaw provisions for modifications of setbacks that were approved at last June special town meeting. So it would be essentially an additional special permit. So so again, in some, there's really no change in the location and the function of the improvements. We've already been reviewed. And again, just to summarize, the process would again, resulting to binding all the existing lots as a single parcel. And we've already started that consolidation process. And we shortly will be having all the lots consolidated into a single lot under the ownership of 1600 Ozgood Street. Then procedurally, we then locate the solar from lot B to the area by the ball fields, the former lot C. And once that happens, we create two A and R lots, including both lot B, which as as we've discussed is approximately 110 acres. And we'd also combine the formerly proposed lots AC and the subdivision road into a single lot, which is 57 and a half acres. So so that is the summary of the changes in the lotting. If you have any questions, happy to answer them. We do know that, you know, Special Counsel for the town has been reviewing this as has Special Counsel for 1600 Ozgood Street, as well as for Hillwood to make sure all the Ts across and the Is are dotted with respect to the solar energy facilities. Okay, thank you, John. John Simons, any questions are coming?
No, I'm fine.
Aaron, any questions are coming?
This is Aaron. No, I have nothing.
Peter, any questions are coming?
I'm sorry, apparently I got muted without my knowing. No comments and very helpful. Thank you. got muted without my knowing. Um, no comments and very helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Kelly, any questions are coming?
This is Kelly. No comments.
Okay, John, is there anything that you're asking us to act on tonight?
Uh, not this evening, but I, but I did want to respectfully suggest that um, it seems that we've um, uh, we've responded to all or almost all of the comments that uh, uh, have been, have been and re-revised. And I, I think we might be at the point, and I don't want to speak for the, for the planning staff, but I think that we're at the point where we might uh, be in a position to start uh, getting decisions ready. I mean, I think ideally
You have to consider an application for this new um, special permit?
We will um, we would, we've prepared a legal ad which could be run within the next few days so that it would be in time for the May 5th hearing.
Okay.
And, and so um, I will coordinate with Monica and Gene on that. Uh, but uh, substantively, there, I don't see any other um, impediments unless the, the board and, and, and the planning staff feels otherwise to uh, proceeding to, to try to get to uh, to a decision on the 5th.
Okay, I'll work with Gene and Monica to see if that is, is great. Uh, we'll do it as soon as we can.
Right. Thank you.
Um.
Hold on. Aton?
Yeah.
Aton?
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
So there's a couple outstanding issues as was discussed tonight. The MAST DOT permit hasn't been filed. And so we would contemplate conditioning quite a bit in terms of, I know it was described today in terms of the geometry, turn lanes, signalization, um, but we'd have to really come up with some conditions to make sure we stay in that loop and aligned with whatever MAST DOT is requiring. Also, the MEPA review, in a previous meeting, MAST DOT had indicated that they felt that a MEPA review wasn't warranted. However, we're still waiting for the MEPA office to weigh in on that as well.
Okay. Fair enough. Uh, okay. So Monica, any members of the public have made any comments? That's a question.
Hi, this is Monica. No comments have come through.
Okay. Why don't we continue this public hearing for till May 5th? Um, why don't we talk about, go back to the warrant article? John, you want to just quickly talk about the signed bylaw?
Sure, sure. Thank you. Um, uh, we've discussed in the past the, the rationale for the proposed uh, zoning amendment, which is to allow for a signed master plan by special permit. And uh, we've narrowly tailored that bylaw at the board's request and, 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 and planning staff request. So when it's applicable.
John, excuse me, can I interrupt for one second?
Sure.
Aton, are you opening the public hearing for zoning amendments? And if so, could you read that statement?
Uh, oh, so reopening, I don't know if I ever closed it.
Well, no, the, the other one, the planning board report was not a public hearing.
Oh, I see, I see. Yes.
The zoning amendment article is.
All right, right, all right. Yeah, so we're going to new public hearing. Okay, so new public hearing, annual town meeting zoning bylaw amendment article. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law chapter 38, section 18, and the governor's March 15th order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This public hearing of the North Andover Planning Board as to annual town meeting zoning bylaw amendment articles um, is being conducted by remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of public will be permitted, but the public can listen to this meeting while in progress. And may submit questions or comments by submitting an email to m g r e g o i r e at northandoverma.gov if they wish to. All right, uh, public hearing opened.
Keep our naysay again, just excuse myself for conflict.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, okay, John, back on.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I thought that uh, the hearing was already opened, but perhaps not. But um, thank you, Gene. Uh, in terms of uh, the bylaw public hearing, uh, in terms of this process, we've uh, as I was discussing, we're looking for a zoning change that would allow for a signed master plan by special permit by the planning board. The, the board had requested that we narrow the applicability of this zoning amendment uh, which we've done to a defined redevelopment project and um, which includes an area of at least 100 acres, involves new construction and renovations. And um, as provided in the bylaw, the um, and it's now reflected as article 30 in the town warrant. One matter that has arisen as a result of um, the changes in the lotting that we are creating is that uh, if you look at by reference to uh, slide number 12, lot A now includes where the former subdivision road is located. So, and that is the main access point for the Hillwood Amazon project. And uh, as a result of that change, uh, we would not have a location to um, to place signage on that major um, access point. And unless it would be considered a um, off premises sign, meaning that the sign would not be on the same plot of land as the, as lot B. And uh, so as a result of that, um, and uh, and where the fact that in general off premises signs are prohibited unless uh, you're meeting certain circumstances, uh, they, they could be allowable under, by the ZBA on private property under certain circumstances and, and by, by the selectmen on public lands. We're looking uh, to sort of streamline this process and uh, include the language that's on slide 14, which is uh, basically uh, to allow for signage, including off premises signage um, as part of the master plan special permit process. And again, this is um, related to the limited area uh, where the North Access Road is currently located. And um, we, we did have a chance to run this by the building inspector. Speak to the building inspector, but I will say that simply that he thought that uh, this adjustment in the language would probably be the least impactful um, in terms of any externalities that could arise because the zoning amendment is, is of such limited applicability as it is. And so um, with that said, I, I would hope that the board would consider uh, this adjustment to the language of this proposed zoning amendment uh, so that it, it could be included as part of uh, the board's recommendation uh, to town meeting.
Okay, uh, anyone have comments on that? All right. Uh, I would suggest, um, I'd like a little more time to look at it. Obviously, I have some questions about the potential externalities and about whether we need this process. I'd just like a little more time to look at this. Um, and hopefully we can, we have a couple of other ones that we need to vote on at the May, the next meeting. So I, I'd be in favor of trying to vote on this at the next one, if people are okay with that. Okay, sounds like everyone's okay with that. Uh, so we'll, uh, we'll look at it, John, and then I think we'll try to vote on this as, as well, come to the other items on our planning board report uh, at our next meeting.
That's fine. I, I appreciate that. And also just one last item, uh, wanted to just remind you that uh, our subdivision extension, it runs through June 30th, so we have, uh, we could deal with this at the next, at the May 5th hearing as well.
Great. So we'll continue this public hearing until May 5th. All right, thank you very much. Can we do 485 Wood Lane, 58 Stevens LLC? Application for planning board approval of a proposed two lot definitive subdivision plan on an approximate 0.574 acre parcel of land located on Wood Lane. Premises affected is located within the R4 zoning district. The applicant intends to make roadway improvements and construct a single family house on the new parcel. Uh, Monica, can you tear it up on this one? And then we'll hear from the applicant.
Yes. Aton, Aton again, I'm sorry, but
Oh, language, yes.
You're opening the public hearing, please read that.
Yeah. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law chapter 38, section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This public hearing of the North Andover Planning Board is being conducted by remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but the public can listen to this meeting while in progress. Members of public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of, uh, during any portion of this hearing. And to do so, you can email Monica at m g r g g r e g o i r e at northandoverma.gov. I'm going to give that email address again. M g r e g o i r e at northandoverma.gov. And we'll now consider this public hearing opened.
All right. Um, hi, Aton, this is Monica Gregoire. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. Um, well, just to give you a, a quick update on this, um, actually, at the end of last year, the applicant submitted a application for an, an R application. Um, after discussion, the board determined that this was a subdivision um, due to um, the looted frontage on, on Oak Street. And what you did was ask the applicant to submit, which is essentially a pared down uh, definitive subdivision application to the board to create this, this one lot. And this is what is before you today. The application's been submitted um, for department review. Um, and so there's there were still some outstanding issues from DPW. The applicant did provide a response to DPW, but unfortunately those were submitted um, a little late for um, review for this meeting. But they have been forwarded to uh, the John Burgizi from DPW for, for review. So we'll have that um, for the, for the next meeting. And so again, what they're looking to do is Oak would become a private way. It is currently a publicly maintained way. It is mostly a gravel way at this, at this point. They'll be doing some stormwater improvements um, within, within that way. But they are looking for um, several waivers, including storm water review. Um, so I did want to make that aware. So it hasn't gone for outside peer review, but it has been looked at um, by, by TPW. So that's something that the board may want to, to discuss if they're happy with that or if they would like this to go before um, outside peer review. Excuse me.
Monica, who currently maintains the road or path, who plows it, uh, who takes care of it, those kind of things? And how are those things proposed to change?
Um.
If at all.
Uh, currently, it is a publicly maintained way, so they do plow. On occasion, they, they will, uh, at the end of the season, put more gravel out, um, which is probably not the best, um, as it, it becomes complicated um, there. What would be needed, um, actually, and this is something that we um, have discussed with the applicant, if there would be any easements necessary, um, the applicant actually has responded and said that um, there would not be easements uh, needed as the existing um, public way has been allowed to pass and repass. But again, the, the way would go from being a public way to a, a private way. So that might be uh, something that needs to be addressed as the, as the management of the roadway would change.
Okay, we'll go to the applicant to make a presentation and uh, if you can, often discuss that, the item about maintenance and plowing.
All right, uh, this is a, a, Mr. Chairman, members of the board attorney Jim Murray here. I met you on December 10th in relation to the A and R, which we did withdraw uh, on a number of factors. Specifically, Mr. Simon did point out a number of uh, issues that would be addressed and it's more applicable to definitive subdivision. And he pointed to a possible lot extension, which advises to go and, and deal with the engineer. And the engineer essentially came up with a lot of the suggestions on Mr. Simon and some of the other board members came up with. DPW considers this a private, and Monica has talked about a public way, but and, and this, this Great Oak Street has been in existence since 1923. And these, the, the properties that uh, are affected, and there are two properties that bought the driveway in addition to 485 Wood Lane have been using this for well over 50 years. So in terms of a title ownership on this, there is no title ownership. It's, 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 it's either by, it's not even an adverse possession issue, which is usage over the years. And there's been a mixed, um, I think there's a mixed opinion as to what they, the town has plowed this and picked up trash um, and garbage for, for many years, put up a sign on this. So uh, the A and R, where we did put in A and R, and we did, did, it was a good fade in or based on the fact that the sign was up and that it was used, but um, because we're putting in, you know, we, we want to put in a, another property on the uh, subdivision there. Uh, we took Mr. Simon and the board's advice and presented this. We, uh, Richard Mead, our engineer from the surveying is on, on, on here as well. He worked closely with the DPW on this. And the DPW, Richard Burgessani, came up with um, a number of conditions. And he, 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 he was um, very helpful on this in terms of what, what he, he would need and what he thought the board would need. That specifically asked us to um, identify Great Oak as a private way, no longer being uh, either a possible, a public way or whatever it was beforehand, and that the town would not have any responsibility for, for maintaining this. Uh, that is indicated on the, on the plans which Mr. Mead submitted, we submitted with the application. He also um, asked us to extend the, the private way to at least a halfway point of the proposed parcel along Great Oak, which again, I remember and I checked my notes. Mr. Simon, uh, with the previous plan we, we submitted observed that as well. So that's, that's also on the plan. Along with another, you know, a lot of the grading requirements, the construction requirements. So that, that is everything that Mr. Mead already asked us to do, which in me, I, I understand I had between 25 and 30 conversations with him, a lot of correspondence back and forth. That was put into the original application that we put in. Monica has mentioned that some issues have arisen. We received an email this past week, which indicated from, from Gene Enright, which indicated four uh, conditions that he would, he would require. Now, we didn't have the benefit of that until, until a few days ago. We uh, amended the plan accordingly and submitted a centipedia to Monica and Gene. Unfortunately, it didn't get to the board. But each one of those conditions, we, we believe has been complied with, and the plan has been amended accordingly. Uh, for example, he asked for a proposed sewer service. We had a four inch PVC in there um, prior to this. He now wants a six inch PVC, which we have no problem with. He wants a curb stop in an airy box to be installed near the beginning of the private driveway outside the paved area. We agreed to that. So does, and then, and then just to indicate, street number three didn't have an indication that was a private way, we amended that as well. So um, we pretty much done every, I, I think these may be the issues that Monica has, is referring to. But uh, they came up, I'm sure we, you know, the time we submitted them. As far as we're concerned, we did, we did that. And hopefully the board will get to see those pretty shortly. In terms of um, the, my understanding is based on the, what you see that the, the zoning compliances are all ticked off. It's got the minimum lot area right to the lot coverage minimum. The building department has completed its review, the certification department, the health department has no issues, the fire department has any issues, and the police department. So I, I would think that the issues that we're talking about, I think uh, uh, Mr. Mead can deal with those, are the emails that we received uh, this past week, and which we, we believe we've addressed. So um, I could handle it with Richard Mead. He's got the engineering knowledge on this, but. But again, we're we're all, we think we comply with everything we need to comply with. And if there's anything else there, we we have attached a waiver. There are a number of waivers there which deal with. One of the specific ones I think the board would be concerned with is the storm management and erosion control. And that's what I would ask Richard to do, Dick Mead to do. Working with Mr. Burgessani. There's what they come up with, I want you to do is, there's going to be, there's a proposed pavement. And that's going to be pitched towards the building or the subdivision we're going to be working with, which will intercept the runoff along the, it's a proposed twelve foot roadway on our side. So based on on my conversation with Dick Mead and his relation relating to the conversation he had with Richard Burgessani, that that should be adequate for for any stormwater issues that arise. So having said that, I turn, and I I believe I have Robert Verdi, who has on the line as well. So he can answer any questions with her to working with the neighbors on this as well. So on that, I would hand it to to Dick Mead. Are you on, Dick?
Yes, I am.
All right, thank you.
All right, so basically, the the issues that just came up with the engineering, as was mentioned, was adding a water curb stop, which is basically a water gate at the point where the new water line is going to be entering the new lot in the back, which is seventy two B, we added that. He also, one of the sheets didn't have the indication that Burrito Street was a private way. So we took the wording that we had on the other two sheets and added it to the third sheet. He also wanted us to, at the end of the to let to the stone trench, and he asked us to to add or to be part of the engineering of the of the roadway to add a collector at the end of it, at the bottom slope.
Sorry, sorry, don't mean to interrupt, but I would ask that anyone who is not currently speaking, please mute. We're getting a little feedback. Thank you.
Okay, so he has to have a a structure put at the end of the the stone trench at Woods Lane that would connect into the existing drainage manhole at Woods Lane. And we've added that for his instructions and also the configuration and the type of structures that he wanted on that. Now, with basically we're proposing a twelve foot roadway, which is, it's basically a driveway. So the drainage that we're showing, I asked specifically when we, before we started designing, whether this needed to be stormwater management calculations be done. And I was told that they would need, he would he would need that. And what what we would be designing would be fine with the twelve foot roadway that we're building for an improvement. And we've also extended that roadway to the midpoint of the new lot. And as was also, we had, one of the points, one of the the four comments was we've increased the size of the proposed sewer service from four inch PVC or six inch PVC. So I believe we have, we have just all the the comments from our initial submission. And the new plans that we just submitted should address all those comments.
Okay. John, you want to make any comment?
Aton, can I, this is Gene. Can I ask a couple of questions?
Go ahead, Jean. Thank you.
So, Richard, on the twelve foot wide paved proposed roadway, private roadway, what's the width of the current gravel that exists today? It's a forty foot right away.
Yep, it's a forty foot right away. And the gravel that's on there, it's variable. It's anywhere from fourteen to eighteen feet wide.
Okay, so the plan shows that you're blending in the existing driveways on the other side of the road. So you're blending them in how? With pavement from their driveway to this twelve foot private way?
Well, we're the pavement that will be on this twelve foot private way will be at the same grade as the ground is that those were the existing gravel driveways. We weren't proposing to to pave that the the extension of their driveways into this into the new roadway. But I mean, I could defer to 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 the client's attorney to see if that would be amenable to them. If that's if that's what the board would like to see.
Well, it says blended in. And so by blended in, you mean the gravel will just transition into the paved private way?
Correct, yes.
So, but but operationally, those two driveways are going to come over this twelve foot paved private way to access their driveways?
That's correct.
Okay, if this was to start from scratch and it was a subdivision creating these three lots, there'd be a homeowners association associated with the maintenance. So you indicated that the plan says, I think this is lot seventy two B. So the deed for lot seventy two B would specify that they're responsible for the maintenance of this private way? Even though the other two homeowners are using it?
That's good. I'm sorry, Jean, hold on.
Hi, Jim, go ahead.
Yeah, Jean, yeah, that's correct. Yes, that would say that.
Okay, how about snow plowing? So the DPW has indicated that they will not plow the private way. They do not typically plow private ways, although they do it currently on the gravel. In their opinion, if they start to plow now, that they could damage it. And they don't want to get in a situation where they've caused damage following, but they're not responsible to maintain.
Seventy two B will be will be plowing. And that that they will, that that property will be responsible for plowing and maintaining. And that would be reflecting the deed. And then, my my understanding is my clients could jump in if they want. But my understanding is that the two affected houses have agreed to that. And I have an understanding of that as well.
Okay, so that's the part I'm concerned about. So say one of those houses works the third shift and it's it's not plowed according to their work schedule. How legally do you account for that?
Well, that's
Well, that's, I mean, that was, I put it in an email kind of because I'm trying to get my arms around that. I don't think, I think everyone's supportive, Jim, of what you guys are presenting and trying to do. But we just have to lock up a decision that accounts for these kind of things.
Well, when, sometimes I'm sure the city didn't get there in time either. But that's something between the there and the neighbors, they're right there. So, and that's something that, I mean, we could do an agreement between the neighbors as to what time. But that's, that's something that I I can't, we can't police that.
Okay, so I'm not, I'm not suggesting an answer to it. I just want
That's very vague.
I just want to discuss with the board.
I'm not sure how I can address that. I do, I'm a convencer and I can, I can, I can do a deed and easements and include them there. I'm not sure if I can put in time, I can put in time of day or check even WBZ as to what time, what time is to be done. But I can, I, if there's a responsibility in that deed to do the plowing and the maintenance, and there's a legal obligation on seventy two B. And if something is not done properly, then there's there's legal exposure to seventy two B to my, to the property that my clients have sold on. So other than that, I don't think there's anything I can do legally in terms of time.
Okay, I'm not, and I'm not specifying the time. It was just an example to to put this in perspective.
I understand, Jean, I I get that. I'm just, I'm just thinking as a, as a convencer in terms of doing that, the the responsibility of maintenance. And I can do, you know, seventy two B has responsibility for maintenance and plowing of this, of the work they've done on this driveway. But in terms of time, I, you know, I can't wrap my head around that.
Okay. All right, so we'll leave it to the board, Aton. That's all I have.
Thanks, Jean.
Okay. John?
Uh, yeah, I think probably most of my comments are along the lines of what Jean has already brought up is, you know, we're, we're basically doing a subdivision because it's technically the right way to provide frontage. And we normally, what we want to do is show sufficient with graded construction to provide the access to the property. But we have on certain occasions in small subdivisions waived construction of the roadway if we felt that there was sufficient assurance that we could get access to the property without any problems, without any complications, without any safety issues. So I guess what I would do is, I don't really have a problem with a twelve or fourteen foot wide access to the other lot, just as long as it's built to a reasonable standard that Jean, you know, you and the DPW could look at and say, okay, that's okay. That in my mind is is the big thing, that that we do that right and that that there's not going to be a problem down the road.
Yep, and I think we're there, John. So DPW has been instrumental in this whole application. So they've worked with the applicants. Their their only takeaway is, once we waive these roadway construction standards, they don't want to be responsible for it. And the applicants have agreed in their deed, they would, they would specify that the owner of seventy two B would be responsible for maintenance and plowing.
That's, that's fine, and that's, that's good. I think we have it both ways then.
Okay, great. Aaron?
Hi, this is Aaron. Yeah, I, my concerns are are the stormwater. Has anybody looked at this or reviewed this? You know, a a technical person, somebody who has some competency? You know, I'm just looking, you know, I'm looking at the the grades on the it's twenty seven fifty six sheet three PDF. And I'm looking at the the Google Street View. And it looks like, you know, there's, there's quite a pitch up this private way. And the applicant's proposing just to pitch the water. And I know it's going to be a essentially a gravel drive. But it's, you know, they're trying to pitch it to some stone on the side. It just, it, I, I'm, you know, just given the slope of the private way, I'm not convinced you're still not going to have runoff down in the Wood Lane.
It's not gravel, though, Eric. It's not going to be gravel.
It's not gravel?
No, no, this is asphalt.
Oh, well, I I think that just even compounds the runoff opportunity then.
Well, I'd ask Rich Mead to to jump in on this. He worked with Richard Burgessani on on the on this issue. So if you want to come in, Richard, in that.
Yep. So we were asked to incorporate a two percent stroke from as you're looking at the road, standing on Woods Edge, looking down Great Oak. From left to right, we'll have, we have a two pit, two percent pitch of the road slanting towards our property, towards the the storm stone interceptor on this, that's going to run the edge of the roadway. So that was, that was asked for by engineering. And because of the, the fact that the pavement's only twelve feet wide, which is basically a driveway and with that two percent pitch, it would make sure that the water would would run towards our side. And then it it's going to eventually get to that stone trench at some point. Even if it travels in a slant going down like diagonal to the edge of the road, it'll get into that that stone trench and then collect at the structure that they asked us to set at the end of Woods Road, which lane. But that was all at the direction of engineering.
Hi, and this is Monica. And just to reiterate, engineering did play a large part in in the design of this. However, the outside peer review consultant has not looked at, has not done a peer review. And that is one of the wave, and that is one of the waivers that the applicant has asked for.
I see. So there, this is Aaron. There's no plans for a peer review?
If I that we've asked for a waiver on that, my understanding is that, look, this, this is an improvement, a huge improvement on what's there stormwater wise before this. And Rich Mead worked with with John Burgessani on it in terms of, this is, this is not a, you know, a big subdivision. This is so in terms of going to an outside peer review for something that we work with, and and Richard, I think, has succinctly explained, you know, this is not, this is an improvement and an improvement that's been recognized by DPW. So in terms of going outside for a period of time for for a peer review on this. I mean, for the project this size is, I mean, it's economic. For my clients, it's it's an economic hardship. But I would again go to Rich Mead on that. And in terms of where we where we would be subsequent to to an improvement here. And then what the neighbors have have, are very happy that this is, this is happening. But that I'd ask Rich maybe to address it again.
Okay, it's the, I mean, basically, I believe it's because it's only a twelve foot roadway, which is, like I said, a normal driveway entrance. And I mean, if it, if you were, it was a normal subdivision with, you know, twenty six feet of pavement and curbing and a whole drainage system, you definitely would want to have that, you know, subbed out and reviewed. But I think in this case, it was, it was felt that because we're we're actually making improvements to the area and only putting down twelve feet of pavement, that what was suggested by engineering for the collection of the drainage was sufficient, you know, without review or without stormwater calculations.
This is Jean. Aaron, I would, I would support their assessment. I mean, John Borgesey is a civil engineer. He's certified to in designing this. It's the, really the equivalent of a driveway. It's a long driveway, but it's the equivalent of it. He has done peer review on other projects, again, that are deemed small in nature for us. I think if he felt that this required a stormwater review, he would have advocated for it.
I don't, I don't have an opinion either way. I was just asking whether there's a peer review and it took three minutes to say, no, that's fine. I'm good.
It's known that they requested a waiver, which would be up to you guys to to grant that.
Okay. Kate? Or Peter, sorry, it's Peter.
Nothing.
I'm, I'm good, thanks.
Kelly?
I'm good.
Yeah, I'm good too. So where does that leave us?
Um, what it leaves is that we just need to hear back from John Borgesey of DPW in regards to the plan changes that were submitted.
And have a draft decision for the next date?
Yes.
Okay, we continue the public hearing until May fifth.
Is there any way we can be bold with with the conditions on this, subject to John Burgessani's approval or his review of what was submitted with the, with that condition?
I know, I, I don't, not, not with anything in front of us. I mean, we, we don't even have any draft language at all.
Right.
Like even if we were to say it's approved, we, there wouldn't, I mean, we need conditions and things like that. And we need draft language. So we're going to have to at least wait until the next meeting. Okay, so we're continuing that till May fifth. Eleven sixty Great Pond Road, Brook School, application for watershed protection district, permit, site plan review, special permit under chapter one ninety five, article four, part five, section one ninety five, eight, and section one ninety five, ten point seven, town north and over zoning by law to authorize a phase to authorize a phased redevelopment and reconstruction of certain existing developed areas of the property, including relocation of the south entrance, removal and reconstruction of buildings, accessways and landscape areas, improvements in installation, new drainage improvements and associated landscaping. Majority of the proposed work is within the general zone, with a small portion of reconstruction of walk, parking, landscaping on the outer edge of the non-discharged and non-discharge zone located in the R1 Zone. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law Chapter 38, Section 18, the Governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This public hearing of the North Endover Planning Board is being conducted by a remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. Public can listen to this meeting while in progress. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so. You can do so by emailing monica@mgre gore at northandoverma.gov. Questions, comment will be read during the proceeding and responded to accordingly.
Hi, and this is Monica. And so the applicant has requested opening of this hearing, but no hearing of evidence until May 5th, or when, or, you know, again, in regards to when we'll meet next due to the COVID situation. So they've just requested that you open the hearing tonight, but no evidence be heard.
Fantastic, that's news I've heard all night, continued until May 5th. Can we get a motion to approve the minutes of March 10th Planning Board meeting?
So move, this is John.
Second. Peter.
Roll call vote.
John, votes yes.
Aaron votes yes. Eton votes yes.
Peter, yes.
Kate votes yes.
Peter, yes.
Everyone said yes. We got, good job, everybody, this is not easy. Unfortunately, I think we may have to have at least another one or two of these, but good job, everybody.
Yeah, well done. Well done, I think, well prepared by the staff. Thank you for getting us ready. Thank you for dropping off the package right there, it may be way too easy.
All right, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Peter.
Second.
Second, John.
All right, is that a yes from John?
Yeah, yes from John, yeah.
Okay, Aaron?
Aaron, yes.
Eton, yes.
Peter, yes.
Kate, yes.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Thank you.
Good night, stay safe. Have a good night, everyone.